Welcome to the 2020 City Council Retreat. We're very excited for you to be here. We've got a good day, a great day planned. And we're going to turn this over to first the Deputy Mayor in just a moment, and then to our facilitator Andrew Ballard. We're excited to have Andrew Ballard back. He actually, I've been in facilitations with him before with the Sound Cities Association. Does a phenomenal job, did a phenomenal job for us several years ago, a couple of years ago. So it's good to have you back. These are great opportunities for the council to get together, sort of untethered from the regular structure of a council meeting, talking about vision. And they're really great ideas, a great opportunity to throw out ideas and really come together. So that's what I'm looking forward to. And I'm really proud of the council and all the people that work here, the directors. And I want to say also thank you to the staff for being here today. Before we get started, let's give a big round of applause for the breakfast this morning. Wasn't that great? Thank you Chef Scott and the whole team. It was absolutely great. I probably ate too much, as per usual. But anyway, it was great to see everybody. And let's go ahead and get started. I'll turn it over to our Deputy Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you Chef Scott.
Bacon was awesome. It is my requirement that we have bacon. I want to welcome everyone here to the retreat. We've been working on this for several months and I'm very excited about being here today and what we're going to accomplish today. We are, Hong Tran is traveling home from a trip and probably will not be here. But I do have ideas and what he wanted me to say. So when it's time, I will bring up his ideas and talk about what he wanted to present today. And I'd also like to thank staff for being here. I know some of the staff have had a very long night because of the weather. And I'm even glad we're here. There was no power in this building until 3:30 this morning. So we're glad we're here. So with that, we're ready.
Okay. Would someone like to lead us in the pledge allegiance?
Absolutely. Would every please rise?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
All right, Mr. Ballard, the floor is yours.
Awesome, awesome, great. Okay. So I want to, I want to tear my shirt off. Can everyone in the back hear me okay? I want to apologize up front to the public. We're going to be doing some flip charting and I'll need to put it. And I apologize to our directors right in front so that our council and mayor can see that. So when we did it two years ago, we had it right up front and that was really problematic. And so I'll keep it as far over here and I'll have you two have a little bit of neck strain, but we'll go through that. So it is really good to be back. Thank you for the welcome, Mayor and Deputy Mayor. So we're going to do just a couple preliminaries so we know how we'll all be operating. First, just a quick review of the agenda. Everything this morning is designed to set the stage for our goal setting in the afternoon. We're going to begin after my preliminary remarks. We're going to begin with five director reports, again, kind of setting the stage. And we'll do a short break. And then we'll do a visioning process. And our ED Director Tim will do a short presentation to kind of set the stage for visioning. And then after lunch, we'll have time for public comments. And then we'll get into, at 1:15, we'll jump right into the goal setting session. This is very similar to our agenda two years ago. And council, Mr. Mayor, you were very, very productive. We got through the entire agenda. You established a short set of goals. This year, the goals are really focused on guiding the directors and guiding the budget process for 2122 cycle. So with that, I'm just going to go over a few of our roles and responsibilities, which I always do, as Jim knows, just to make sure we're all role aware. So I'm asking council and the mayor to agree on the agenda. Susan has put a lot of time working with council to put this agenda together. Also, I don't know if Jerry Lynn is in the room, but she has done an awful lot of work to assure we have, yeah, let's thank Jerry Lynn. She's been part of all the meetings that Susan and I have had and just a tremendous help. So I'm going to ask that my council and mayor agree to the agenda that we've put forth and that everybody participate at an even level. Also, there's the notion between disagreeing and being disagreeable. I want to be really clear. This is, you are not special. I have this slide for, and I've done over 200 government retreats, 500 total. So I, this is an area that I really enjoy. But I actually encourage disagreement, as long as the discourse is civil. And I found this body very, very easy to work with. So I'm not worried about that. So I don't want you to think that I've put this up for you. It's being disagreeable or having kind of a harsh tone that I really prefer to avoid. So I'm asking you to give me the authority, based on the agenda, to keep our session on time and on topic. Are you all, all six of you okay with that? Great.
Yes.
So we're going to limit our sidebars. We've got a lot of work to accomplish by 3:30. We'll keep the conversations at a strategic level. And again, public, I'm sorry for my back being at you. It's kind of the way the room is set up. But we are going to keep it at a strategic level. We're dealing with high-level vision and high-level goals. Vision is a 10-year time horizon. Our goals will be two years, the 2122 fiscal cycle. So we're not going to get down in the weeds and talk tactics. It's a very high level. You've got a great staff that will be implementing these plans. So if ideas or issues come up that are off the agenda, I want to honor the input and I'll put it in the parking lot so that the report that I deliver to Jim and Susan, it'll have all of that. So nothing falls through the cracks, but then I'll get us back on agenda. We've got a fairly ambitious agenda, but I'm confident we'll get through it and accomplish everything on the agenda as we did last year. So just a little bit of kind of stage setting here. So we're going to be working to build consensus, not only on a vision statement, 2030 vision statement, but also on goals. And as you leaders know, the definition of consensus is general agreement. It's not 100%, right? This is democratic parliamentary procedure. It's where most like it and the rest can live with it. And so that's really what we're looking for. If we get high-centered, it happens sometimes, and that's not a bad thing. I'll do a thumbs up, thumb sideways, thumbs down technique. Love it. I can live with it. I hate it. And as long as the ups and the sideways outnumber the downs, then we proceed. If there's an equal or dominant number of downs, then we continue the conversation. Okay? I use the nominal group technique. It's the same as two years ago. It's about problem identification, generating solutions, and making decisions. It's essentially taking us from discussion into making decisions, just like we did two years ago. Everybody's opinion is equally important and valid. The group will vote. You've already got your sticky dot capital. I'll explain the sticky dot exercises as we use them. And that's pretty much it. I'm just going to clude before we get into our director reports with a little bit of vocabulary. We are doing a vision statement. And so our definition of a vision statement is intelligent foresight and a kind of a mental image of achievement resulting in our desired future. You're going to be determining what your desired future is for the year 2030. And that's actually not a year that was just thrown out. There are a lot of things that are going to be happening, including light rail. And it's an important milestone. But you're going to be talking about that desired future in terms of the legacy you want to leave for your great city. We'll also be doing some goal setting. Goals defined as specific and measurable accomplishments or targets that guides city priorities, work plans, and budgets. Your directors are looking forward to your goal setting because your goals will do a short set of goals because it will guide work plans and the budgeting process for, as again, 2122. So really, that's all of the stage setting we want to do. We've worked together. I'm sorry I missed you last year. I was in a different part of the country. But I'm back. And we're going to start off with EJ Walsh. And each of the directors, did you have something?
Did you talk about the mic?
Oh, thank you for reminding me, Susan. So the microphones are always on unless you push the mute button. And as soon as your finger goes off the mute, the mic is live again. We've got a lot of folks in a long, a long room. So if you're soft spoken, I'm going to ask you to get very close to the mic. Jim is, he projects, he's very easy to see, to hear. Some of you might need to get a little closer to the mic. So I'll kind of help you through that. Thank you for reminding me of that, Susan. So each of the directors are going to have about 10 minutes to give their presentation. And then we'll do a short Q and A after each director. The agenda says five presentations and then Q and A. We'll do a few minutes of Q and A after each of the five presentations. So directors, please stay to your 10 minutes so that we can allow for Q and A. And EJ, I have your presentation up and ready to go. And your clicker is right here.
Susan, thank you.
Are you sure it's live?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Susan's looking here. Good morning, council. I almost said good evening. Used to presenting at night here. So first of all, thank you for having me today to present to you. I want to start out by apologizing. This presentation's, something's speeding back times. This presentation is not really set up for handouts. It's set up to be on the screen. So you have a copy of it in front of you, but it's really, you're only going to see about 20, 25% of the information on the paper. And there's a lot of information in here, so we're going to go through it somewhat quickly. So Public Works, we've been working towards the future for a number of years. By definition and the charges that we have within city code, we do that through our CIP, TIP plans on a, on a charged basis. So to start, I'm going to recap some of the stuff that Public Works as a department has been doing for the last couple of years. So starting two years ago, we started a staff cross-training program. We also, about a year and a half ago, realigned some of the managers and supervisors within my department. We began planning for transitions. We'll get to retirements a little bit later. And one of the things that we've developed is our employees have a strong sense of pride. They're very passionate about their work. We also have many long-term employees. We have 52 employees within Public Works. Of them, 11 have 15 or more years of experience. Six have five to 10, five have 10 to 15. So there's a lot of long-term employees in the overall hierarchy of the city. Internally, we've, going back to that changes, you know, two years ago, as part of the last budget cycle, I approached council and asked to add an additional inspector to our right-of-way team to more appropriately inspect right-of-way work that was being done by private development. And we also, at community development, led the charge to implement Blue Beam for the city. And Public Works tagged along on that. And we are using it extensively for our capital program. So with adding that right-of-way inspector, the numbers you see in front of you is our budget for 2019, our expected revenue budget for 2019 was $100,000 and $286,000 for plan check fees and inspection fees. With that additional inspection, you can see, these numbers are only through November. The December numbers aren't there. We've already brought in $341,000 over our budget revenues. And we'll get to that, we'll come back to that in a second. But we also started what we call continuous improvement focus areas. So we gave each one of the managers one of those. So a couple of them, and I'm not going to go through all of them, but a couple of them that we have been focusing on over the last two years is increasing comfort with decisions at the lowest level and methodological approaches to workloads and concerns. We've been focusing on emergency services. We've been focusing on social equity in our decision matrix process and how we do that through council charges and some others. And a lot of this comes back to creating efficiencies within our department. So we've also had a large focus on how do we tell our story? And how do we share with the community what we do? So some of the ways we do that is through Public Works Week, which happens every year. Solid waste recycling events that I know many of the council members attend. Public education is a big focus for us. Puja Sound Starts Here, Storming the Sound with Salmon, that's just a keppel for examples for you. We've also, on the capital side, started focusing on working towards the future as a city. So we've, we're in the process of finishing up converting all the streetlights to LEDs. We're in the process of building out the adaptive control project for traffic control. And we are working through the city center access project. All of these projects are programs through our TIP and CIP plans for six years. That plan contains, it actually contains about 30 years' worth of work. And it's a roadmap for Public Works. So a couple other examples of where we've worked through is about 15 years ago, the Public Works departments for the South King County cities came together and started the process for improving the Pacific Highway Corridor from CTAC to the Pierce County line. So that's been a 15-year endeavor that we, as federal way, finished last year. And it's a massive change, as you can see in some of these pictures. We also have a traffic impact and concurrency program where developers are responsible to mitigate their impacts to the city as a result of their development. I can tell you the current rates for the traffic impact fee, they do not fully mitigate those impacts. So we also, from 2007 to 2018, the pavement index rating, our PCI, dropped 10 points. And as we've presented to council before, I'm not going to get too far into the weeds on that, but that is a, how we quantitatively measure the conditions of the road. And it's a curve. The more it goes down, the faster it drops. So we were funding it at a level of 1.5 million per year and seeing a decline. So in 2018, or 2019, sorry, council authorized the solid waste utility tax overlay program, which is projected to start in 2021, collecting approximately 1.5 million per year to put towards residential streets. And I want to accent that it's towards the residential streets, which we're not touching at all right now. The other thing I want to point out to council is that only gets us to, we've talked about this before, and the term that some of the council members have used is stop the bleeding. It stops the decline. It does not start to correct it. To correct it, we would need to be funding this program at 4.5 million per year. And it would take us 15 years to get back to where we were in 2007. So we've also, just like for the traffic side, for stormwater, we also have a comprehensive plan that contains about 20 years' worth of work in it. And it's our roadmap for that side of Public Works. Something that, so it's a seven-year plan. It contains about 20 years' worth of work. Something that I am very proud of my staff for is our grant application success rate. So the last two years, we're at 70% success. To put that into comparison, most cities average between 25 and 30% success rates. We have secured over $8 million in grants in the last two years alone. And we are highly successful. And we do that as staff. We don't have a grant writer on staff. Our engineers write those grants. So that's a lot of the things we have been doing. I'm going to quickly go through some of the internal challenges that we do have. Council's all heard me talk about this before. We've presented this the last three budget cycles. But we have a functionally obsolete maintenance building. There's insufficient room. You'll hear John Hutton talk as well, that we cannot have all of our staff in this building at one time. There's physically not enough room. We are storing equipment outside. As you can see, the building is literally falling apart. And this was built as a fire department. It was not, never intended to be a maintenance shop. So internal maintenance staffing, this is the other big one that we struggle with. So litter pickup has become a very hot topic with the city. And it creates a significant workload for our staff. And it's frustrating for our staff. It's one of those tasks that it obviously needs to be done. But we go out, we pick up a road, and a couple hours later, there's trash on the road again. And we constantly get, well, you didn't do that. And we can literally, we take pictures now to show, we did it. And here's the clean road. Because it's this endless cycle. So going back to that earlier slide, you know, there are zero positions allocated within my staffing by council for litter control. So last year, we received from citizens, this does not include emails internal to the city, 2,171 citizen requests for work. Of those, 656 were litter. We spent 2,400 hours picking up litter just in Public Works. That's like almost 1.5 FTEs with no assigned staff for that. So what we do is we do it as part of other work. So if we're out mowing and we see trash, we pick it up. If it's a hazard to the traveling public, AKA in a street, we pick it up. Beyond that, though, we do not proactively go out and remove litter. So going back to that earlier slide, as the mayor and I have discussed offline, as part of the budget amendment, I will be requesting that we carry forward that excess revenue from the inspections side that Public Works brought in to add two FTEs and one truck assigned to litter pickup as part of the budget amendment process. So staff retirements, I hit on this a little bit ago. We have had a significant number of staff retirements in the last, last two years. We've had seven retirements. Combined, that's 100, almost 104 years of service just to federal way. It's about 300 years of service in their careers. All but one of those had over 10 years of experience. So, and the longest one had 23.5. This equates to 13.5% of Public Works retiring in a two-year period. So it's been a hit to us. It's a lot of knowledge that's walked out. So we, IT does a great job, and I sing Thomas's praise all the time, and whether he's in the room or not. But they do a monumental amount of work for us, for Public Works, as they do for all the departments. And everyone wants something, right? Whether it's a streetlight fix, whether it's trash picked up, potholes fixed, whatever. We don't, as you've kind of caught the theme, necessarily have the resources to respond to everybody. So we have become a very data-driven department and trying to leverage our resources to the greatest amount we can, and in all shapes and fashions. So what you see is four separate programs that we use to track exactly that. Two of those are actually supported by Public Works. The other two are supported by IT because IT doesn't have the available staff to be able to support all four of the programs you see in front of you. So two of those programs actually follow my staff to support. So continuing, so our current transportation CIP is valued at approximately $1.5 billion in $2,019. To put that in context, at our current funding levels with our grant success rate, it's 187 years' worth of work. Swim, we're only at $25 million for that, which is about 30 years' worth of work. So we funded at approximately $2 million. You saw the grant numbers earlier. And starting in 2021, we fund the overlay at $3 million. So ADA transition plan, I'm going to move through these somewhat quickly because they're a little longer term. But ADA transition plan, we do not fund at all. The downtown core is approximately $5 million to bring that into standard. And that is the cheapest part of the city. Frankly, that's why we started with it. Street lighting, there is no reserve program for the existing streetlights. So if a streetlight breaks right now, if we don't have budget, it doesn't get replaced. We don't capitalize the streetlights. Neighborhood street lighting program, we have a resident request program. At our current funding levels, we have 87 years' worth of streetlights to fund, assuming we get no new requests in the next 87 years. Signal infrastructure, there's no reserves on that. So deferred maintenance, we have already talked about litter pickup. We've talked about liability risks to the city. These are all pictures of deferred maintenance that we should be doing, that we don't actually have time to get off of the task we're doing to get to them. We have 632 open citizen requests as of yesterday and 1,700 staff-initiated maintenance tasks that are not done. To put that in perspective, that's 56,400 documented, trackable labor hours of deferred maintenance that we're not doing. We have, it's at our current staffing level, that's three years' worth of work of all of our maintenance staff without cutting a single blade of grass, picking up a single piece of trash. The couple other problems we've had is, we talked about the maintenance yard a little bit. We've had some substantial thefts over the last two years in that. We're an easy target. It was built as a fire station. We store everything outside. It's a safety risk to staff. We've had robberies while we've had staff in the yard. It's also frankly, just flat out demoralizing to our staff. We've had $100,000 worth of theft and damages in the last two years. Copper wire theft is another huge problem in the city. We are still waiting on December billing. Counselors familiar with, in the fall, we came to council asking for a budget amendment to increase the budget by $30,000, which put the Public Works budget for copper wire theft at 69,000 for 2019. Our incurred cost was approximately $127,000, and we do not have the bills for December So we have some, I was asked to come up with a couple of recommendations for the one, five and 10 years, at the request of the Deputy Mayor. So these are, these are really the point of this afternoon's conversation, so I'm just going to leave them here as thoughts for you. But for our Public Works recommendation for one year, this one is not budget intensive. But to begin planning for a new maintenance yard, develop and implement an initial litter control program that I already spoke about, and develop policy guidance on deferred maintenance. Five-year recommendations, we need to be in a new facility. We need to develop funding to restore the overlay program. We need to get that up to where it should be. Reserve, and then the rest of them are my suggestions, but to develop reserve programs for both signals and street lighting, and as well as expand the litter control program to be comparable to our peer cities. Ten-year recommendations is to develop and implement the ADA transition plan, sustainable funding for multiple programs. And with that, like I said, I know there's a lot of negative in there. So I do want to focus. Public Works has been strongly working towards the future already with the resources that we have. And thank you.
We do have two minutes for questions from council and mayor. These department reports are very important and are designed to be directional when we get into our goal planning. So I really want to make sure that council and the mayor have an opportunity to ask each director. We've got about two minutes.
That's where Coach.
I just wanted to reframe the conversation, saying it's not negative. It's reality.
Yeah, I'm not sure your mic's working either.
Yeah. Oh, I think, okay. Get a little closer. I don't, I just want to reframe the discussion here in that I don't think it is a negative report. I think it is an accurate report that reflects basically where our current financial state is in the city.
Yep.
And the fact that we need to reprioritize or generate additional revenue. But we do have real needs in our community that are not being addressed right now with the current reserve schedule. And we have major projects in place that we need to support the community to execute on. So thank you.
Yes, agreed. Thank you.
Coach Mark.
Thank you. EJ, so a lot of your problems appear to stem from lack of revenue. I'm wondering if a grant writer, have you looked into a grant writer?
We have. Like I said, our staff is highly successful with writing grants. Our engineers write them, which frankly takes away from engineering work. We have a very, very high success ratio. Yes, we have looked at it. It is on my list of positions. Frankly, there's some other positions like maintenance staff we need more.
So I'm wondering, you know, the federal grant program from, it used to be Tiger Grants. Now it's got a different title called INFRAA through the federal government and...
Infra Grant System?
Yeah. And I'm wondering, maybe we need to target more of the federal grant funding.
Sure.
For the work that you do, because 8 million is like a drop in the bucket for, I mean, Redmond, when I was in office, got 120 million. And when we were getting 12 million. So, you know, I would really like to kind of concentrate on getting more revenue in for you. That's what you really need.
Coach Mark.
Thank you. Thank you. That was a great presentation. Almost disheartening to think that none of us will be around if we continue at the rate that we're going. So a change is inevitable, and finding some kind of a revenue generation is inevitable. So thank you for bringing it to light the way you just did, putting it into different perspectives. My only, not only, but one of the comments I have is the ADA transition plan, the 10-year plan. How can we make it a more, a priority, moving it up further, like to maybe a one-year, a five-year plan? Because it seems like 10 years way out to implement.
There is a very long conversation. I, my suggestion would be, I think we need to absorb it in chunks. Our ADA transition plan by federal mandate needs to include all city facilities, all city parks, as well as everything within the right-of-way. We started the survey like three years ago, and this was something that was supposed to be done in the late 90s. And frankly, no city has accomplished this, you know, no one. It was an unfunded... It was an unfunded mandate from the federal government. But we started about three years ago, and we focused on the downtown core, knowing that's where most of the foot traffic is, and knowing that it's also the most recently constructed infrastructure, so it's the most up-to-date and it's going to have the least number of problems. Tackling that in one or five years is potentially feasible. I mean, it's still $5 million. It's not cheap, don't get me wrong. The rest of the city, though, is the majority of the cost. So this is going to massively inflate when we start looking at bringing, I mean, we're charged with bringing like facilities like Dumas Bay up to speed, and all the parks, and City Hall, and everything else. So I think we need to focus on a longer-term solution, even if we have stepping stones in there.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
I would just ask council if you have additional questions, to write them down, and we can get written questions to staff next week, because we are on a time schedule.
Great job. Thank you.
Thanks, EJ, and thank you, Susan. We are about five minutes over. So we've got Parks Department, and John Hutton is coming up to do his presentation.
Good morning, and thank you for this opportunity. I also wanted to let you know that I have Deputy Director Steve Eichardt and Parks and Facilities Manager Jason Gerwin with me, in case you have additional questions that I'm unable to answer. So much of my presentation is very closely related to EJ's. We suffer from the same struggles, the same problems. Number one would be the maintenance facility, obviously, and the yard is inadequate. As EJ mentioned, we can't even physically fit both crews in the building at the same time. So one waits outside while the other department gets their safety briefing and early morning instructions, and they're out the door while the other one waits. So we stagger our start times. It's fairly intense. So, but I want to focus a little bit, just then I'll go quickly in the interest of time. Our department is broken up several ways. We have administration, that is myself, Steve, and Mary Janicki, our admin. Fedaway Community Center, which you all know, general recreation, facilities, maintenance, urban forestry, trails, open space, Dumas Bay Center, which we're very proud of, we're very proud of all of it, Knudsen Family Theater in this building, and the Performing Arts and Events Center. Want to talk about a few successes we've had. It's not all doom and gloom by any means. We are a fantastic department. I could not be more proud of the individuals that work in our department. They do magic every single day. We are indeed understaffed, but that doesn't stop us from being great. So one of the things that we did this year was we implemented RecTrack. RecTrack is a software program, and with the help of IT greatly, we rely heavily on IT, and we're very fortunate to have those great people helping us. RecTrack helps us to improve our online registration, which helps with customer service, and it helps across the board with financial reporting. Also, finance is very helpful to us. We added a champs camp for youth with disabilities. We added, thank you, Allison, we added picnic attendants to increase our customer service at all of the different picnic areas. We added a new program for seniors called the Senior Prom, and Councilmember Moore's parents actually attended, and expressed his happiness with that, and we were very happy to do that. We got a senior grant for $130,000 to use at the community center. We improved the kitchen, floors, walls, and AV equipment. Additional successes, senior programs, we continue to provide unbelievable destinations and experiences for our seniors. It's wildly popular. We continue to make important improvements here to DBC. This little facility does some serious magic with a three-person staff. They did about $1 million in revenue last year, and we couldn't be more proud of them. We opened Panther Lake Trail. After a long time, Steve Eichardt developed that trail in-house and does a fantastic job. Public Works was able to help a little bit with that department, with that program as well. Thanks to council and mayor, over the past two years, you provided us with sand banding equipment to help us rescue our natural field turf programs. We have implemented that both at Town Square Park and Celebration Park, and it has shown great improvement. We'll continue that program, so thank you for that help. This year, in-house, we have some very talented people in our maintenance division that created a cage around our living Christmas tree to protect it. We realized we were kind of doing damage, unintended damage to our own tree by hanging all the lights on it. So we now hung those on a cage, still looked fantastic, but protected our tree, so. We also developed our Parks Recreation Open Space Plan, which is also called the Prose Plan. This is like the comp plan for the city, except it's just for parks. It's our guiding principles for the next six years, and it allows us to apply for grants. We just replaced the Sahale artificial turf. We had partners and grants for that. We obtained large grants, which funded several of the items on the list that I've already read to you. And we negotiated a new inter-local agreement for maintenance with the Fedaway School District, and that's a big accomplishment. So internal challenges, as EJ mentioned, and I can't say enough, the new maintenance facility is absolutely a must. It has to happen. It is, it's truly obsolete. We're not exaggerating or embellishing. Staffing levels, obviously, our staffing is too low for a community of this size, and we need to adjust to meet the needs of our community. One of the things we kind of joke internally is we've kind of become a default department where a lot of things, and that happens to a lot of departments, but it happens to ours quite a bit, where there's a lot of important work that needs to be done, and it kind of lands where it lands, but that does take you away from your mission when it happens. So we are also suffering from the same things EJ talked about regarding failing infrastructure. Sports fields and facilities are in need of repair. Lack of preventative maintenance for the last 12 years, we have not been really performing any preventative maintenance. And that's, think about your house or your car, you don't have to change your oil every 3,000 miles, but you'll be buying a new engine if you don't. So that's very expensive to defer maintenance. Again, over a decade without properly maintaining things, and that's just no choice. Staff retention and training, we've lost several key members, as EJ mentioned, with retirements. We have had some retirements as well, but we've also lost some key members recently to other jurisdictions, and so that's being addressed. Thank you, mayor and council. Salary survey is out there right now. That's going to help, but we truly need more people as well. So external challenges. Demographics in Fedaway have changed dramatically, and that's a good thing, but we need to be prepared to change with those demographics that are changing. An increase in density has changed use patterns in certain parks, and will continue to in our facilities, so we need to be able to adjust and move forward in great ways to continue to do the magic that we do every day. Lack of financial resources, I can give you a quick example of that. Just five years ago, we had $150,000 to take care of City Hall. We're roughing it at about $50,000 now. That is everything from janitorial to parking lot maintenance, to HVAC, to fire alarms, to elevators. That's $50,000 to take care of a building that houses the vast majority of our city employees. Vandalism, this is, as EJ mentioned, it's the litter problem with EJ. We suffer from that as well, but vandalism is demoralizing. You go out there and you make something beautiful, and somebody tears it up, to the detriment of the whole community that wants to use it. It's demoralizing, but more importantly, it takes us away from our mission as we're repairing vandalism, graffiti, all those things. We take care of it immediately. We know it's important to do that, and we do, but it is demoralizing. Homelessness has changed our world quite a bit in parks. Cleaning up camps is not what anybody signed up for. Inappropriate usage in the parks, illegal, whatever you want to call it, it's not what the park was intended for, and it really takes us away, and that falls into that vandalism area again. Potential funding sources that we'd like to think about and consider, potential, look at park impact fees, more grants. To EJ's comment, we've been very successful in obtaining grants. We used to have a grant writer with the city. We used to have park planners in our department that were tasked with writing grants. We're trying to shoehorn that in, but it's not easy. Grants can be very time-consuming, and we're good at it, but it would be better if we had more resource. Potential a park bond or a park levy could be helpful in the future for just things to think about. Park Department needs, number one, increased staffing, mostly in the area of maintenance. And the important thing is, too, every time we add a body to our staffing, especially on the maintenance side, we need to think in terms of what do they need in addition to the person, because we are short trucks right now. For every person we bring in, we need to bring in appropriate equipment, including trucks, protective equipment, PPE, as we call it, all the things that really need, we need to provide for that person to get the most out of them that we can. We need to increase financial resources for day-to-day operations. I use the City Hall example. So for the park's future, steady funding source to address deferred maintenance. We're not going to be able to attack this all in one bite. It's going to take time. As EJ mentioned, it will take time, but you have to have, we have to, we have to have together some type of a plan that says we're going to dedicate a certain dollar amount per year to deferred maintenance, so we can start to play catch-up with that. We need to improve existing facilities. We've met with Councilmember Coachmar about potentially improving Celebration Park to increase the positive economic impact through sports tourism. We've been working closely with Economic Development Director Tim Johnson on some planning for that type of thing. There's a lot of money in youth, especially youth sports, but adult sports as well, but we need to improve those facilities to make them playable throughout the year, and that would be artificial turf to begin with. Internally, we have a goal of attaining gold medal accreditation from NRPA. We see ourselves as one of the best departments in the Western Washington for sure, and we're not bragging, it's true. Our community center is top-notch, number one in the country, and it has nothing to do with the building. It's all about the people. It's the attitude that we take to work every single day with us that makes that building great. There's many, many buildings just like it in the United States. We're number one for a reason, and it's not the building, it's the people. We want to continue to improve our performance at the PAC. In our first year under our new agreement, as you know, we saved $250,000, and that's a great achievement. We plan to continue on that success arc. We're very happy with them, and they're doing a great job. Parks future continued. There's been talk in the community, and we're supportive of it, and this is not immediate by any means, but there's potential for a standalone senior center and a teen center. Identifying the best use for Brooklake, we're entering into a master planning process. We're working closely with the Historical Society and other stakeholders to take a look at what really could become Brooklake. It's a beautiful property. We've done some great work with a volunteer group, We Love Our City, out at the Blueberry Farm. That has been rehabbed almost to really excellent condition again, and so there's great things in store for Brooklake. We're also looking at master planning Steel Lake Park and Lakota Park. And one of the things we'd like to add is more covered picnic shelters. That's been an area of revenue production and great popularity, so more covered picnic shelters for picnics in our area. The cover just makes all the difference in the world. We currently have two, one at Steel Lake and one at Town Square. And I am happy to answer any questions for you that you may have.
Council, any questions? Deputy Mayor, and then Councilmember Coachmar.
I just want to let the public know that all the PowerPoints are available online where we post our agendas and meetings.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Coachmar?
Thank you very much, Mayor. So John, when we met, we talked about Celebration Park. So we have a lot of needs, so I would think that before we take on new projects, we need maybe to improve the practice we already have. So when we talked about Celebration Park, we talked about our revenue is, from the soccer association, is $111,000 per year, and our expenditures are $500,000 per year, per year. So it would only make sense if we would take eight of those soccer fields as the very minimum. I know each field is $1 million for artificial turf.
Approximately, a little bit more.
Probably more. But once we did that, we could increase our revenue, would you say double, maybe?
Oh, more than that.
Yeah, triple. And then decrease our maintenance.
It would decrease. It wouldn't go away, but it would decrease some, yes.
So I'm not talking about city money. I'm talking about grant money. I'm talking about federal money. I know that we, I should say, I'm 90% sure we can get money from federal plus from the state, too. That's construction money. They never give money for operating, but they do for construction. So that's one way we can get, you know, you have to do a rate of return on your investment. And if you're looking at it from budgeting purposes, you know, once you take away that expenditure and you increase your revenue, you then free up money for other things. So that would be, for me, a very sensible thing to do, short-term.
I agree.
All right, Councilmember Coachmar.
John, I want to thank you for preparing this city facilities list with the conditions of each one of the properties that are on the list. I think it's very important for us as a city council to really have a deep understanding of the costs associated with getting these projects up to speed, or up to the condition that would be considered good or excellent. So I think if you could provide some monetary costs, that would be very helpful, I think, in our evaluation. I think we have, I think there's always going to be a desire within the community to have new and better, and I understand that, I think, I like new and better as well, but I think for us, we have some real gems that need some polish. And for us to understand both what they need, and also to have a vision for what they can be, as Councilmember Coachmar just said, as far as maximizing the opportunity for revenue generation, I think of this particular facility as being one, where there certainly is probably a lot of opportunity. When you look at the view we have here, is this being utilized to its highest and best use? No. What's it going to cost to get it there? So I think that these are important conversations for us to have. So I think having that, though, I think going to the budget cycle, not that we're going to be able to address them all, but at least we can have an understanding of it, so we can have a conversation with the community that where they're informed as to what's going on and what we need to bring these facilities up to speed. Thank you.
We've got about one minute left, and I really appreciate Deputy Mayor's comment about writing down and presenting to our directors other questions so we can stay within our time constraints.
Okay. Anything else? John, great job.
Thank you.
Left him speechless. Just kidding.
I know, we talk fast.
All right, good morning, Council, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Councilmembers. I'm Thomas Fichtner, the IT manager for City of Fedaway. So I pride myself on not using slides and graphics like this displayed before you, because it's small, it's busy, and it's complex. But ultimately, it shows a community, and it shows how information technology, or as it puts it here, as information and communication technology, is a part of a hard infrastructure that everything else is built upon. And so let me give you a quick scenario. Imagine your car driving down 320th, and you are approaching a traffic light. And as you, as EJ mentioned, you're part of the adaptive, we've now deployed the adaptive traffic signal program. That wouldn't happen if it didn't operate on the underlying technology infrastructure, the fiber-optic communication, the network technology that allows all those traffic signals to interoperate. So that, right there, is one example of how IT is critical for another department and for our citizens. So we've had some successes. The city has maintained a fairly decent capital replacement policy for IT equipment. And part of that, we've managed to hit some key improvements in our infrastructure. Server virtualization, basically taking all the boxes and consolidating them down, so they use less power and they're more efficient. We've also grown our storage. Data storage is immense these days, especially when we talked about cameras, as well as our backup. You know, we try to continue backup strategies so that our system can, we can recover from a disaster. But not to be confused with disaster recovery, which we'll get to later. As well as the phone system, we have capital money. We were able to replace it with a new, updated, state-of-the-art IP phone system. Same thing with security, and not necessarily physical security, but information security. So we have firewall, we replace that, we keep it up to date as best as we can with the money we have. Same thing, we've transitioned to Mimecast. It's a cloud-hosted email system that filters both spam, filters for viruses, malware, as well as does archiving. And also, we've gone through audits, one of which you, Council... And also, we've gone through audits, one of which you, Council approved for 2019, and we're in the midst of that right now. I do have a draft report, and we'll touch on a couple of things in a little bit. But we also have to go through every three years, a triennial audit by Washington State Patrol on behalf of the FBI, and we'll get to that in a little bit. And Safe City Camera System, we had $250,000 state grant that, that were very generous, and we're able to expand and replace a lot of our aging cameras, to the tune of, we have about 176 cameras with over 400 views, which is huge, citywide. And we've also done, we put a lot of time and effort into our GIS system, and that's the mapping base that we, that we have here at City Hall. And one of those things that, that Tim Johnson will mention later is, is a project that his, his crew did that, that helped visualize the, the, the trade market area of Federal Way, and that's all done through GIS. In addition, we're working on with CD for shopping cart tracking as well as graffiti. So some of the 2020 key projects that we're working on that we need to get done is security audits. This year, we get audited by the, by WSP and by the FBI. And if we don't pass that, if we fail that, they will restrict our ability to run criminal history checks through their system. So we have to meet their criteria for information security. CI Security is a firm that we hired, and they had, do have a draft report that, that will be sharing with Council in an executive session about some of their findings here very soon. My building permit, we're working on with Community Development. It is a program that is endorsed by the Master Builders Association, and over 13 local jurisdictions from Bellevue to Buryan already participate in that. So that will, will streamline our online permitting experience for both the public as well as our staff. And then Council Chambers, Channel 21 upgrade, we also are working on that. We've been trying to get that done for the last couple of years. We have 1990s technology that, that is working in that Council Chambers that we need to upgrade. It is on its last legs. And same thing with Windows 10. Windows 7 is, is not supported by Microsoft anymore, so we have got to finish that, and that is a security issue as well. Not to mention the police car mobile router replacement. That might seem like a small task, but it's not. We have to touch every single police car, and that allows each police car to communicate. So without that technology, they would not be able to run, or contact dispatch, use the Sector E ticketing system, or be able to do ALPR throughout the city. So some near-term challenges or opportunities and needs that, that we have is staffing. I like to think of us kind of as a, I've got a couple of trade-type people, but the majority of us in IT are kind of general contractors, which means we're not really, we don't have a lot of focus. We, we have, I myself, kind of doing about four different jobs, four different functional roles. And, and that's usually not the case in some of our neighborhood, which we'll get to here in just a moment. So time to complete projects is a huge issue. Like I said, with, with the Council Chambers upgrade, we've been trying to do that for a couple of years now. We have the money, just don't have the time. Supporting existing systems and applications. The Amanda system, which, what Community Development uses for permitting, we lost a key employee in 2007, and largely that system has kind of stayed stagnant since, and it's been very hard and very expensive to make changes to it. And the police cars, we've, we've got a balance of, of some cars that are in the lot and others that are take-home. Those take-home cars are getting nearly impossible, not impossible, they are very challenging to work on because police officers run three different shifts, and they're a 24-hour operation. IT is not. So myself and Brian also get calls just last weekend at 7:00 AM on a Saturday or Sunday morning, and then the weekend before that at 1:00 AM in the morning. So this, this city is a 24-hour city. We need to be able to support that. Security and compliance and disaster recovery. You guys have seen the headlines. You know what this means. Imagine if you were to walk into City Hall, all of the computers are down, your phone system doesn't work, you can't send and receive email. Not to mention, all the data that we have, our databases that have our history are not accessible and destroyed because of some sort of crypter virus, ransomware. You've seen it in the headlines. This is not if we're going to get attacked, it's when. And so we need to be prepared. And we do the best we can, but we could do a lot better. Maintenance and operation costs, it's ever-growing. Annually, we're about 5%. The budget does not increase 5%. And a lot of the, the vendors are transitioning to a software-as-a-service type model, which they don't want you to buy a license and then pay a small amount for maintenance every year. They want you to pay a lot. AutoCAD is a prime example. AutoCAD is a design software. Public Works use it, uses it extensively. We had to add a license, and because we had a on-premise type deployment for AutoCAD, we could not add another license. Instead, we had to transition our entire model over to a software-as-a-service style. What that means financially is that we went from about $4,000 to $5,000 a year to $12,000 a year, just because that's what AutoCAD is doing these days. And there's nothing we can do about it. Adobe is another prime example. So that's coming, more ways than not. Spillman is another one that is going to be, which is what the police records management system operates on. They will, already in their long-term, long-term horizon, is going to be transitioning to a software-as-a-service model. There are pros and cons. It's not all bad. It just is expensive, and we have to prepare for it. And then finally, mobile devices. We've got, it's ever-growing, and we have well over 300 devices between cell phones and data cards that we support. So going back to staffing, touch on that a little bit. You guys have seen this chart before. I presented it before. I've updated it for 2019, and, and there's a reason for that because Council and the mayor were very generous and allocated us one more FTE, so now we're back up to eight, which is, which is better than seven, where we've been at for a while. But, but one, one thing I want to point out, though, is this chart goes back to 2002. That's the longest, the earliest data that I could, could, or achieve at the time. Since 2002, we've added over 25-plus new systems, or applications, or properties, like the Performing Arts Center. It has an IT infrastructure. It has wireless. It has cameras. It has network. It has computers. Town Square Park, same thing. We've added it. So that's all part of that, those 25. The Safe City system, we didn't have that in 2002. We had maybe a couple of CCTV systems, and now we have over 176 cameras and the infrastructure that supports that. So what does that mean? So if we look at comparing us to other neighboring cities, and some not so close to us, like Yakima, you'll see that the red bar graph represents total city FTE, and the blue line represents how many people in IT. And the reason this is important is because, just because a city's population is a certain amount, or their assessed valuation is a certain amount, doesn't necessarily mean it's, it's part of the services that they provide, okay? And, and because if a city's a full service, they're going to have a bigger IT department. Okay, so I can't just say, well, Bellevue's at 61 employees. Well, Bellevue does more than we do. So does Kent. So the biggest thing is, if they have more services, they're going to have more total city FTE to support those services. So how that translates is one, one IT FTE per city, how many city FTEs. And on this chart, you'll see that Kent, for every one IT position, is supporting about 19 and 1/2 full-time total city FTE. If you look at where we are, we're over double that. We are down from 48 with seven FTE. So now with our eight, we're, we're down to 42 and 1/2. So we're trending in the right direction. But you can see that, the kind of the standard approach here, or the, the average is around in the, in the 20s. That just means we're, we're doing more. We're working harder. We're supporting more people, more applications, more systems with fewer resources. So five to 10-year, and we're, we're almost done. I've got two, this slide and the next one left. Again, five to 10-year, you know, needs and opportunities for us to work on is a strategic plan. The last one we did was in 2000, in 2005. Since then, we haven't done it. And that involves hiring somebody from the outside that knows exactly what, what, what cities need, such as especially smart cities, and where we're going in the future. You know, EJ's group with Public Works is doing it already with the LED lighting. That's all adaptive, and it's, it's a part of the Smart Cities Initiative. Same thing with the Adaptive Traffic Control System. That's part of the Smart Cities, too, but there's way more than that. So we need a, we need a strategic plan. We need somebody to come in and, and let us know exactly where we are, how we, how we sit, and, and move it forward. How, what goals that we need to do for the future. Part of that, the draft report is, from the security audit that we had done, is about IT governance. We don't have a steering committee. We don't have a, a committee that's made up of the directors or representatives from the departments that's, that's dictating what IT is going to work on and the priorities and such. Same thing, you know, we don't have a governance or a industry standard model, and that's Information Technology Infrastructure Library, or ITIL. And that is, that is, that's a standard. It's, it's a industry standard model for how to operate an IT organization. It's a framework. Same thing with policies and procedures. We have very few, you know, going back to like a standard operation procedure. So if we're, if one of us goes away, there's, there's not like a book of things of, okay, this system has, has this, and, and other things have, have, this is how you, how you manage one system and how you manage another. That, that doesn't exist. And we use a free open-source system that doesn't really meet the needs of our, of our, of our department. So getting a, a proper ticketing project and asset-tracking system is, is important. Finally, the last slide is citywide system updates. And our enterprise resource planning or financial system, we use a product called Eden Permit System, Amanda, Viewworks for Public Works, SWIM Asset Management, and Quadrant for Point of Sale. And all those have varying challenges associated with them. Eden is going to be sunsetting. We are going to have to transition that at some point. And that's by the vendor. Amanda, how much more do we continue to sink into it before we consider getting a different system? Maybe that's integrated with, with an ERP system. Same thing with Viewworks. Public Works is using it, but Parks isn't. Parks has a ton of assets to track, but it may not be the best fit for us. And finally, Quadrant is supported by one guy who's retired, and we've had issues where he's been on vacation and we haven't been able to get a hold of him. That's a problem, and that's our point of sale. That's how we take money in. And finally, staff training and certifications. I have about $6,000 in my budget, and so that's, that's been, been a challenge to, to manage and keep people trained up. And finally, our aging infrastructure, you know, we've got analog cameras still, you know, we haven't been able to replace. We've got door controllers that are failing, and we've got, like, Public Works has a software called for crash analysis. That's still running on Windows XP. So that, that gives you an issue, a picture there. So these are big city needs. These are big city challenges, and, and we need to address them. So I would make a request from Council to, I'm happy to meet with you and discuss these further. That concludes my presentation.
We have some time for questions?
Counsel? Councilmember Coopman?
Thank you so much. Thomas, thank you for your presentation. Just out of curiosity, I believe, I really do believe we've had interns in your department, correct?
We have, oh, yes. Yes and no. Generally, we call them temporary because we're, we're paying them, and they haven't really been in. We have had one recently as an intern, technically, but not as much anymore.
So understanding that you, you don't, you don't have all the time in the world, you know, is there any desire to just kind of reach out to RentnTech or UW to, you know, work with their IT department, IT class to get some interns?
So the, the challenge that we have, even with full-timers, is it takes a while to onboard. And with interns, by the time they learn our systems and we've, we've taken that time to teach them, they're out the door.
Yeah.
And, and that just adds additional drain to our staff. I, I love being able to teach people. I think that's very valuable, especially for a younger generation. It's important. But we are highly reactionary right now, and it's, it's hard to work that in when you train somebody and then three months later, four months later, they're gone.
Yep.
And now where did, where did all, they benefit, but the city has now taken a dip with the resources that we have.
Certainly understand. And one comment that, that you stated that kind of caught my attention, and as you're working on, on visioning for the next several years, is you made the statement of, the city is a, is a 24-hour-run city, and we're not prepared for that, or thereabouts, is what I thought I understood you saying.
Correct.
Okay. So that's something for us to kind of keep in mind as we begin the visioning for later on in the day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Coopman?
I just, just wanted to say that I think IT has gone from being this nice thing that we do that makes things a little easier to becoming an absolute necessity for our city. And I think that it's been funded at a level that really hasn't addressed the changing needs of the IT infrastructure requirements. So looking forward to hearing more about how we can support that, getting some definitive numbers around what those costs were. I think we have a lot of aging infrastructure in the, in the sense of outdated programs that we're basically band-aiding together to have them continue to work. And I think that your, your staff certainly has done a yeoman's job in, in making that happen. But I do think that there are some requirements as far as looking to the future that we need to be clear-eyed on in, on, in basically prioritizing. I think that, I think the thing that keeps coming up is that we have serious needs with infrastructure, delayed maintenance, and IT falls right into that category as well. So thank you for the presentation, and I think for the opportunity you're giving the Council to, to really look at IT along with Public Works and Parks through the eyes of how we can strategically develop both the funding and the vision for what we want that to be. So thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Coachmar?
Yep.
Okay.
I just really do believe, along with Councilmember Coopman, that it would be helpful to know what the costs are for, and what, and to prioritize what you think is the most important thing to work on in the next annual budget.
Okay. We can, we can do that.
Well, and, you know, actually, as, as the Council's aware, as the acknowledgement of how important this, this department is, it's actually becoming its own department, subject to Council approval. It's becoming, again, its own department, which would have previously been a department, and I'll be nominating Thomas as our director of that department, subject to Council confirmation. So I think that's an acknowledgement. We came, we, we came, or, or it was brought in to the mayor's office previously during the Great Recession, but we certainly, this is an acknowledgement of just how critical a component this is. So thank you, Thomas.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, we're, we are all teed up for Brian and Community Development. Councilman and Mayor, I've asked, been asked for everybody to speak louder, so maybe getting, really burying yourself into the mic.
Thank you.
You're up, Brian.
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Council. So the topic of these presentations is future planning and needs, and when it comes to community development, that takes on two meanings, obviously. One is the future planning of the department, but also future planning of the city. So I'll get into a little bit of both of those, as previous directors have done. I'm going to focus briefly on four areas, comprehensive planning and two subsets of comprehensive planning. One is the City Center Plan Action SEPA update, a specific project within the comprehensive plan, sub-area planning, the value of that, and then a quick word on our permitting process. So I'm not going to read all this, but I am going to read the top quote. This is right out of our comprehensive plan. It says, "The role of the comprehensive plan is to clearly state the community's vision for its future and articulate a plan for accomplishing this vision over a 20-year period." And then it seeks to answer a number of those questions below. Again, I won't, won't read all those. That's for your benefit to refer back at a later time. But these are the kind of questions that our, a city faces generally. The last update to the comprehensive plan was in 2015. It's a massive undertaking. If, if we were, if the city on its own initiative were to do nothing, then we would be required by the state to update it every eight years. So we're, we're coming up in the next couple of years on a required update if we, if we do nothing to the comprehensive plan. So then, again, a subset of the comprehensive plan or a project within it is the City Center Plan Action SEPA. This has been a project that's been of great benefit to the city. That red border that you see effectively is from PAC Highway to 23rd and from 324th to 312th is the, is the boundary of an area that was analyzed and looked at, or conducted an environmental impact statement to determine the impacts of at, or conducted an environmental impact statement to determine the impacts of future plan development. And so what that means in a nutshell is if I'm a business and I, if I come into that area, normally I would be required to do a, uh, by SEPA, to do some kind of environmental analysis of the impacts that my business is going to create. What the city did years ago is it said, "Let's define this area. Let's identify all the impacts so that when future businesses come in, that's already taken care of and they can just come in and open shop." Okay, so I mentioned that SEPA, uh, is, is sort of the, the governing law behind this and it allows us to do an environmental impact statement. Beneficiaries of this, um, are the Town, Town Square Park, Performing Arts Center, and Event Center, Affinity Apartments, and numerous small businesses over the years. So it's a great benefit, uh, for economic development in the city center of the city. The initial cost for the original Plan Action SEPA in 2006 was just over 200,000. It was extended in 2015 at a cost of just under 100,000. Uh, this is set to expire in 2025, so we will no longer have the benefit of this Planned Action SEPA, uh, in five years unless we do, uh, something about it to, uh, extend it. Or depending on how much has changed, we may need to start over, uh, and do a new one. So, cost to renew is, uh, anywhere from 150 to 300,000. Okay, and then sub-area planning. This is the second subset I'm going to be referring to, uh, of the comprehensive plan. So, sub-area planning is taking a specific neighborhood or area within the city and concentrating a planning effort on that particular area. And the example that I want to bring up is the recent, uh, issue with the Sound Transit Operations and Maintenance Facility. Uh, this is, what you see is a, is the future route of the light rail from its current terminus, southern terminus at Angle Lake, down to the Federalway Transit Center. The top portion is on the left and the, uh, bottom portion is on the right. So, this identifies the six original, uh, potential sites for the, uh, Operations and Maintenance Facility, or OMF, as we often refer it to. And, um, famously, the site known as the Dick's Burger Site was eliminated from consideration, um, after what was perceived to be a general outcry from the public about impacting Dick's and other businesses nearby. The story behind it, however, is, and this is from the, the Kent Reporter, um, so it says, "The cities of Kent and Des Moines began work years ago to zone the Midway Area." The Midway Area is, is around Kent Des Moines Road and Pac Highway, which is where the Dick's Site is. "Began to work years ago to zone the Midway Area for transit-oriented development. There was strong public opposition to this site," said Dave Up the Grove, who's a member of the Sound Transit Board. Uh, and it goes on to say, "But that didn't carry as much weight as the impact to limit the planned transit-oriented development." And he goes on to say, "With or without Dick's drive-in, the site would have been removed." How was, you know, and I would say, "How is that possible?" Well, the mayor of, of Kent, Dana Ralph, uh, was quoted to, uh, or goes on to say that she thanked the city long-range planning manager and the city liaison to Sound Transit for their work on getting the site off the list. The way they were able to do that, there was no, you know, let's talk about this. It was a sub-area plan that was in place that the cities, city of Kent did years ago. And I'll emphasize this date at the bottom, 2011. And the site was removed from consideration in 2019. Now, does this have a laser? Oh, dach, okay. So, the sub-area plan document is very thick and I know that the people in the back are going to struggle to see this, but this is, what you see here is Kent Des Moines Row and going into Kent Valley. This is Mount Rainier right here. So we're looking at sort of a southeast direction. Uh, right here is Pac Highway. If you go down here, this is Highline College right here. If you go right here, this is the Dick's Site. And as you can see from just the cover page of this plan, it has buildings that are characteristic of a mixed-use development, both residential, retail. And so what the plan said, what the Kent City staffs did is they turned the Sound Transit Board and said, "Look at the sub-area plan. The area that you want to turn this into an OMF is planned for transit-oriented development." This area is the landfill. Nothing there. So they were able to turn in this document and by that, by doing so, they were able to get the Dick's Site off, um, off the list. Now, the reason I bring this up is there's been a lot of discussion in the council about sites being considered in Federalway for the OMF. And it's oper, it's instances like this where sub-area planning would be of benefit to the city. And it's hard to, to undertake that now and, um, you know, try and get something on the books to, to eliminate any sites now. And I don't want to discourage you from continuing to, um, work with Sound Transit on, on those sites if there's concerns about them or eliminating them. But I just want to emphasize that sub-area planning, it has value in, in, uh, dealing with situations like this. Uh, this just emphasizes the, the massive undertaking that, that sub-area planning it, it is. This is all the stake, list of primary stakeholders and development participants. And then also at the bottom, there's a three firm team of consultants. So, sub-area planning is massive undertaking, both in terms of, uh, public participation and resources from the city. Okay, and now, I'll conclude with a quick word on permitting. Um, so when I started just over three years ago, I wanted to get a sense for where our department was in on its, on its permit process. So I, um, wanted to look deep into the numbers, but I also wanted to get a sense from people of what their perception was. So we, I had my staff look at all the numbers that, uh, and there's various metrics that we use to, uh, determine how well a permitting process is doing. Uh, the one that we focused on is initial response times. In other words, if you come in for a permit, how long does it take for us to respond to you the very first time? To say, "It's either good to go or there's some problem with it." Uh, so we, the staff started crunching the numbers. In the meantime, I wanted to get a sense from people. I didn't want to just rely solely on numbers to, to make a basis for decision. So I did, I did two things. One is, you know, occasionally I have to go to the other side of City Hall. And whenever I would come back to the permit office and people were walking out, I would say, "Hey, how you doing? You know, were you just in there? How was your experience?" And I wouldn't say, you know, "I'm the director," you know, to kind of, to, um, so that they answer differently. I would just kind of be a, a normal guy. "How was your experience?" And that has been, been very insightful as to what they've, um, what they've experienced. Generally, it's a, it's a positive experience. I mean, not a lot of them want to be there in the first place, but it's not, nothing too negative. But occasionally, there's things that they bring up that are very valuable insight that I simply don't have or my staff doesn't observe. And then secondly, I went to the Master Builds Association a number of times where I'm talking to builders and general contractors who are our customers that work not just in Federalway, but in all parts of the region. And I was able to talk to them about, you know, when you think of Federalway versus all the other jurisdictions that you work in, what comes to mind? And that was a very valuable experience as well, to see where we were better, where we were not as good. So, addition to the numbers, I wanted to get a human element as well. But as far as the numbers go, what it came back was, the column that you see, the list there is all the different types of permits that we deal with, in a general sense. The region column is the number of weeks that it took the, the region on average. And when I say region, it's a, it was a, a survey of other neighboring jurisdictions. Their averages. How long did it take to, uh, respond, the first response for permits? And then on the right was the city of Federalways. Uh, as you can see, we're, we're about in line. We're, we're better in some, we're worse than others, but nothing, there's no cause for concern. If I were to bring a fellow colleague or an industry expert on, on permit processes, they wouldn't observe anything that is particularly alarming. And this goes to the point, uh, that EJ mentioned earlier, is there's a lot of pride in our, our staff. They have pride in what they do. They want to be, they want to serve the customer as, as efficiently as possible. So I was pleased when I got these results that showed that we were doing, that we're doing pretty good. But I'm also an advocate for, uh, continuous improvement, um, whether it be my, myself as a person or the people that I'm around that try to make better, or the job that I have. I try to make it, uh, do better, even if the numbers come back and says, you know, you're doing okay. So, I invited, um, the State Auditor's Office to come down to Federalway for a week and, um, look at our permit process. This was in 2008. And what resulted was a week-long, um, what they refer to as a lean academy, uh, in which we do a kaizen exercise. And kaizen, for those who are familiar with this, is a Japanese word meaning change for the better or continuous improvement. So that's, that's kind of who I, I am. Even though the results were fine, I still believe in continuous improvement. So again, the State Auditor came down. We took staff from Planning Building, Permit Center, Public Works and Fire. We spent a week, um, looking at this and this resulted in, uh, to find process improvements. And this resulted in 18 recommended changes. I'm not going to go through all of these, um, but these are some of the things that, that came up. A couple of the other departments have mentioned Blue Beam. This has been a huge, uh, improvement. Something as little as update the intake checklist, you know, when someone comes in and, um, maybe they haven't turned in everything, it's valuable for us to say, "We still need this" before you turn it in. Because otherwise, if we accept in an application that isn't complete, then potentially it's going to get lost for a month before they ever hear back that it's incomplete. And so if we can say upfront by updating this checklist to say, "You still need this and this," then they can come back in three days knowing what they lack, rather than waiting 30 days for us to tell them that they lack it. So that's been valuable. So, what has been the result of this? So this is the same survey that I mentioned earlier. This is in, what we did in 2017 that shows the region, the city of Federalway. And then I'm going to add what the change is after we did the kaizen here on the right. So what you see is we basically shaved a week off of all of our response times, except for the ones that we were already really good at. So that's, this is an improvement by over 15% in efficiency, uh, as a result of the 2018 kaizen. Um, and that was very encouraging to our staff to see those results and, and to the customer. We were basically, and that's the beauty of kaizen, is we were doing the same effort, but because we were doing our processes differently, the customer was getting an added benefit of 15%. Whereas before, they were, it was, it was not as efficient. So that's, that's the beauty of, of the improvements that we made. And we've seen this in other metrics that we use to determine if we're, how we're doing with regard to, uh, response times. And the most recent example I can give you is with, um, the three, uh, elementary schools that we processed. Um, this is a, this is not a survey. It's not a sample. It's every elementary school, uh, in South King and North Pierce Counties in the last five years. And it shows our three schools up there how long it took for us to respond. And we're almost two months better than the regional average. That was very pleasing to see as a result of the changes that we made. Um, and we're, we're, we're still not content. We're going to continue to improve, um, but it was very encouraging to see this, um, result. And, um, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. Counsel, uh, first Counsel, Counselor Moore?
Thank you. Let me see if I can get this as close as possible. Brian, thank you. Thank you for all your work that you're doing in this. And, and I know that you've been diligently, quietly working through the challenges and, and your department, um, you're faced with a lot of tasks. You're faced with a lot of challenges, just like any other department. Uh, and I think your department, um, just like others, are also critically important to, uh, bringing more businesses in, uh, and therefore bringing more revenues so that we can afford to meet the demands of our citizens. Um, and I'm, I'm, I know that Counselor Juan and, and Counselor Tran and myself have been huge advocates for lean management. And I'm glad to see, um, the results that it's already, um, given us. Uh, and I know that, that, that will get better. And I appreciate you talking about continuous improvement because I think your department, and quite frankly, other departments too, uh, should always look at, with that model, motto, which is, "How do we continue to improve everything?" Uh, so my question is, do you have a point person to, uh, that's, that's like really understands kaizen, uh, in your department?
Yes. Me.
Okay. Is there, okay.
I mean, I mean, don't get me wrong. There's others who are totally on board with this. It's not just me and they're all just kind of dragging along. I mean, part of kaizen is, there has to be buy-in from everyone.
Correct.
So I, I don't want to diminish everyone else's contributions or their enthusiasm for the idea of continuous improvement. But as far as the, as a kaizen itself, I, I would, as a myself as a form person.
And I'm, I'm, that's great to hear that. And I would encourage you to also look at another, and I don't want to get into the mayor, uh, managerial staffing, you know, uh, but I would also look at another person in addition to you, uh, to, uh, to build leadership within that department as well. So that when you're gone, that staff person can still lead that effort, is what I'm kind of thinking about. Um, and then I guess the other question, and I'm looking forward to reviewing this in our committee, uh, in off-time, is, this is great, uh, but there seems to be some sort of a disconnect, um, with, um, the chamber's perspective and the results that we're seeing. And so, I'm looking forward in, in the next couple, several weeks, in discussing that a little bit and diving into that a little bit deeper. But I like the results and I think the longer we're implementing kaizen and other tools of lean management, I think we'll continue to see better results.
All right. Deputy Mayor and then Counselor Moore.
Thank you. And I don't expect an answer today because I, I just don't. But, we used to be known in Federalway for, the neighborhoods used to be known, uh, related to the elementary school. If you said Adelaide, you lived by Adelaide, everyone knew where that was. And now it's different. So if you could eventually let us know what sub-areas in Federalway, what neighborhoods, what areas in Federalway, we would need a sub-area plan?
It's, you can define the boundary anywhere you want. It's not, they're not existing.
I, I realize that, but if, are there certain areas in the city that we should be doing this besides where the OMF site is? Thank you.
All right. Counselor Moore?
Thank you very much. So Brian, can you tell us what you feel the discrepancy was between the school districts' complaints about the permitting process and what you believe, uh, perhaps could have happened or could have been done better?
That's a great question and I don't have an answer. I don't know. Uh, I, I just, the, the results from that previous slide show that we're two months better than the region. I, I, I don't know. There was comments made that other jurisdictions are better. The numbers suggest differently. And again, that's not, those weren't cherry picked, those, it's not a sample size. That's every elementary school, uh, in the region.
And you generated a report on that, obviously?
I'm sorry?
You generated a report, you and, um, on this school district issue?
Uh, yes.
Okay. All right. So that's available for review. Counselor Moore?
Yeah, thank you. I'll make this really quick because I know we're, uh, being sensitive to time. I also really appreciated in your report to us, um, that you went out of your office to talk to general, to the public about that. And I know that you and I have talked before about putting a, a comment box and just encouraging constant feedback from, from the public and having a dedicated space where people can put written feedback. And I think that's something I appreciate, the fact that you talk to people. But I think having a dedicated comment box, uh, could also, uh, be helpful as well.
Yeah, I, I agree. The numbers can only take us so far. There's got to be a human, human element to it as well.
Brian, how many, uh, how many approximate, thank you. How many approximate permits do you think you, CD goes?
So we, we, this year was a little higher. We do, we did about 4,000 this year. Overall customers, we deal with over 13,000 a year.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Okay, we are all set up for our...
Oh, I'm sorry.
With how many staff? And that's, that's a high number that you just mentioned? So what's the staff, at least front?
There's, I think there's 26 and a half FTE.
But when they come in, they're, how many people that do they encounter?
It depends on what they want. Passports is right there at the front desk. If they go to the permit counter, there's, uh, we usually try to have at least two-deep for that.
I do want to say, and, and Dr. Campbell said this when she recently testified before the council, and I think it's at the spirit of kaizen, is that we can always do better. I think you had said that as well. And so, you know, certainly we can always, and I, and I know that's your approach as well, we can always do better and we're going to find ways to do so. So, thank you very much. And that, that point was well delivered.
Counselor Moore?
I would expect that if we're having issues on either side, that somewhere we, we get to some kind of a resolution process before it gets to the point where the other agency is coming in and saying they're behind. is coming in and saying they're behind. I mean, it's important the way they're behind and down probably a school, but so that you have some resolution process that goes as you go along. If there are problems, that there's somehow that we get that resolved before it gets to a problem in the end.
I know, no, Councilmember Coach Moore, one of the things that, that I don't think is really, I've tried to highlight this at several chamber quarterly briefings and in the public, there were multiple times in which we gathered up everybody together. We were in the Halvis Room, we were, not only with the DeVry Building, but these other locations, where we were very conscious of even losing a day here, a week there, you know, and we were really, I think primarily when there was, we were in the process of the, getting the DeVry open, and that was a real critical process where we're working together. So I think you're absolutely right. There was a great deal of collaboration and coordination. We need to get back to that, obviously, and, and certainly, you know, the current status is not, you know, ideal about how that has played out, but there was a tremendous amount of effort on the part of the city, and I know by the school district, to do what we could to make sure that we got that done. So, okay. But thank you for your comment, because I think it goes to the very heart of the matter, Councilmember. Okay, anything else before we move on?
Moving on.
Okay, moving on. Thank you.
Moving on.
Moving on, thank you. It's, yeah, it's...
It's after ten.
Yes, absolutely. Okay.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. My focus probably will not be just in the finance department, it will be on the finance outlook for the city. Most of the things that you've heard this morning, city hall roof, sport field, maintenance shop, fiber optic, online security, less staff now than pre-recession, more work now than pre-recession, sound transit and city development, pretty much all of these you've heard before. And I think it's about time that I think we do something about it. I decided to use this picture because I think I've heard from the community, or from some people, that, well, maybe the city may be in financial issue. So the question is, is the sky really, really falling? And also with, are we able to adequately deliver expected service at the expected quality level? Based on the comments of some of my colleagues, you can actually answer the two questions that I have in there. So I think hopefully my presentation will crystallize pretty much what my colleagues have really said. So I will try to answer if truly the sky is falling. And looking at that bus, that means with the resources that we have, there's so much that we're being from it, and it's actually coming out from the seams. That is exactly what my colleagues have shared with you. The items to cover, I'll try to brief you briefly, quickly, on what we've done in 2019, the sound transit, the Supreme Court judgment regarding the water and sewer utility tax, SCORE, the city reserve policy, and how well we've done with that, and what is coming with the salary study and position analysis. For our 2019 activities, which I will be making the final December report to the Federak and the Council probably in the next month or so, our revenue are holding up, so compared to what we projected, our expenditures are generally holding up as expected, especially the general fund. So we've, we spend a little bit less than what we had budgeted. Fund balance remains very, very stable, and that is a real key to the future. Revenue leakage, one thing that our departments have been able to do is trying to mop up, and I'm very thankful to Mayor's support in making some of this decision. The business registration, we went with the state late October last year, and I'm very, very proud to let you know that between October and the middle of this month, we've added more than four hundred, more than four hundred new businesses. Those are the ones that were doing business in the city of Federal Way that didn't have Federal Way business licenses. So now what we're telling them, when somebody called me and said, "Well, I haven't done business in the city of Federal Way," and I'm like, "Okay, go to the state and get yourself off." It's that simple. So if the state will let you that truly you are not doing business in Federal Way, then you need to come off. And so that we're not keeping records of businesses that are not happening, so, and we're working with the chambers to be able to have access to that information. The state system, also in addition to that, we used to do our renewal in December, and that was actually about three, four years ago. All my staff showed up on Saturday to be able to put this together. So by going onto the state system, actually based on the anniversary of the state business license. So all the licenses are now due in December. So this has lessened the pressure on us. The admission tax, I think we're working through this to make sure that from now on, we will actually be auditing the report that they file and compare what they are submitting to us to what they did last year. So that if there's a problem with their business, we can probably advise them or get some feedback from them. We will be auditing utility tax report also. Before, all we did was just got whatever revenue that they sent to us, we took it. But now we will be actually reviewing and audit. What this is, is mopping up all the revenue that are out there. We're mopping up all the current taxes that the city has levied, and I think this will increase our revenue in the long run. Sound transit, based on what you've heard, I think I see these. I've walked in almost about five different entities in this state in the same capacity. I think one good thing that the city of Federal Way has going, you have a lot of good dedicated employees that are willing to do more than they, than actually than their counterparts are doing in the other areas. If we take advantage of sound transit, these are some of the things that we need to look at. Parking, once sound transit get to Federal Way, people will be driving to Federal Way and going to Seattle. It will affect the businesses in Federal Way, because when the sound transit parking lot is filled, they will take whatever parking lot that is out there. I think we need to be thinking forward. So our own citizens that are going to Seattle or going someplace else, that means they'll be driving to the parking. How do we move them? These are potential opportunity and potential revenue options, too. Downtown business hub and business recruitment, we can make downtown, our downtown, as a way for people to go someplace else to work. Or you can make it a place for people to come to work. If you leave it to sound transit, it will become a place for people to go out to work, and that will now really improve your revenue. What you want is for people to come in to work, and that is what gives you the revenue. You have an option to make a change to that. So that is what I mean by downtown workers' hub. Or, you know, non-taxable properties, I think, when you convert a taxable property to non-taxable, what you've done, the tax on that property, you redistribute it to the rest of the people that are paying property tax. And that is why the resident at some point will keep on screaming. So the more you take off the tax rule, the more burden you put on the tax, the people that are, that are left. Type of properties that are non-taxable, you have governmental properties, that is like post office, King County, city, school, fire department, all of those properties are tax exempt. Religious properties, churches, affordable housing, non-for-profit. So when you drive around any of these properties, based on their size, those are the ones that are not taxable. In the 2019 tax rule for King County, the city of Federal Way has twenty-five thousand seven twenty-nine properties on the tax rule, and that amounted to thirteen point one-three billion. Out of that twenty-five seven twenty-nine, seven forty-nine of them are exempt. That is a very small number. But that's a hundred and forty-nine, amounted one point four billion. The tax-exempt properties, when the King County booked them, they don't spend time to reevaluate them every year, because there's no point. So the one point, four billion that you, that you are looking at is the construction cost. It's now what those properties are worth today. If you were to look at what those properties are worth today, I bet the value would be twice if you compare your own personal property to it. So, but because the King County will now waste time in reevaluating property that they will not tax, so they, they don't even have enough time to evaluate the ones that they are taxing. So non-taxable properties are now reappraised. Also, sound transit, I think we can create a fiber optic as a separate utility. We started that in the city of Ellensburg several years ago. That is what will make downtown a destination instead of a departure. If you leave it to sound transit, we will build apartment there. That means those people that are residing in the apartment will go to the train station to go to work someplace else. If you build office complexes there, that means people can come in, take the train in, and within two minutes, they are where they need to be. The Supreme Court judgment on the water and sewer utility, the ordinance was passed in 2018, that is in March. So as it is now, we will have, and the utility, the water and sewer company will have collected nine months' worth of utility tax in 2018, twelve months in 2019. And we had, the Supreme Court had the hearing last month in January. So I assume probably it will take them a few months before they write their judgment. But one thing that I, hopefully everybody understand, the calculation of utility tax is not the same thing, it's not similar to sales tax. Sales tax, you purchase something for a hundred dollars, and the sales tax is ten percent, the total cost is one hundred and ten. Utility tax is different, because utility tax is intended to be paid by the provider. So the utility tax is based on what the provider is collecting. So if a provider is collecting a hundred dollars, and they are charging additional ten, and they are collecting one ten, one hundred and ten is what is taxable. And that is usually a confusion even among the owner, or even some of the government entities also, because it's intended to be paid by the provider, not by the user, which is different from sales tax. SCORE, I think that is another one of the bright lights. We're saving, based on the decision of the mayor and the council, we'll be saving two-point-one million on SCORE. And with what, you know, Chief Wang and the police department, the court, and the public defender, what the city has done, I foresee in 2020 or 2021, actually, they're saving more than two-point-one. Just right off the bat, the, the fee that we will be paying for, in May, that we're saving, the warehouse in Yakima, about fifty-eight bucks, compared to two-hundred-and-sixty. You don't have to be an accountant, you know, fifty-eight dollars, two-hundred-and-sixty, you know. So I think, without compromising the security of our residents. The reserve policy, again, just to talk in terms of whether the sky is falling, our general fund is doing well, the reserve is still intact, utility, utility tax is still very intact, our RIT is doing really well. What does the reserve do? It provides a reasonable safety net for a short time in case of emergency. So even if our revenue were to drop, all of a sudden we hit the recession, and we plan a revenue of fifty million. Instead of fifty million, we get in forty-eight. What the reserve policy is saying, well, if the council and the mayor wants, we have ability to carry on through the end of the year before we make any changes. So that is what reserve policy is supposed to do in case of an economic opportunity. Again, even though the mayor and council have taken advantage of this, something comes up that we need to deal with quickly. We have the strategic reserve to be able to tap into that, to take advantage of that. So there are some good things, a lot of good things, within the city. The salary study and position analysis is coming along, paying the staff more to keep good staff. When good staff leave, and you can see, that is part of what my colleagues have shared with you, we often hire more than one to replace the one that just left. You know, hire more staff to be able to timely provide the quality service that, that is needed. So I think those are the things that are ahead. Sustainability and the rising cost, we know our property tax rate doesn't grow as fast as the labor cost is growing. In conclusion, I do believe, no, the sky is now falling, the city is living within its means. Living within its means, that is what that truck picture is depicting. But we're doing more than it means that we have. The city needs to hire and maintain more qualified staff to meet the growing needs of the community and the service level that is required. Whatever service level that the mayor and council feel comfortable with, the city has maintained structurally balanced budget for the past six years. I think because we've lived within our means, we've done more within our means. That is why, again, what most of my colleagues have shared with you, they are doing more with increased the amount of services that needs to be provided without increasing the number of staff. Some investments are needed to prepare for the future. So I think like that fiber optic, like some of those things that we need to spend the money to make sure the revenue will be there. So the sky is now falling, and we're doing most with what we've got. The future belongs to those who prepare for it today. This is your chance. By failing to prepare, you are preparing to fail. So I think we need to have a plan, and I hope this is our chance. I'm hoping that by the time we're done, I hope we will have, have an opportunity to come back and crystallize whatever your plans are, so that we can better address the future.
Even though we're over time, I think it's very important that council has the opportunity to ask questions. This is a pretty important issue. So we'll take a couple minutes before break to ask our finance director.
Councilmember Coach Moore?
So Ade, could you tell us what your recommendation would be for the fiber optic utility, whether we should do a study to see what the rate of return would be on that investment?
Yeah, what a fiber optic, what I, what I have in mind is, if the city were to develop a core downtown, the way the city of Federal Way is structured now, you have where the city hall is, you see where the school district is, a lot of offices are distributed all over the place. It would be extremely, extremely expensive to move fiber optic to each one of this building. If you were to develop, based on your code, half a six-story building in downtown that can accommodate the same number of employees, all you need is a fiber optic to this building, and you are serving majority of those businesses. And with a utility, it will cost a lot of money, but you can tax that as well.
But should we do a study on that?
Yes, I do, I do believe we should, yes.
Okay. Counsel, any other questions? Deputy Mayor?
What would that study cost?
Well, it depends on what you want to do.
Okay.
You know, so I think if you define, like I said, what I will propose is find a core downtown, you know, and I think it's something that Thomas will be able to help, and we'll be able to do some study on that. But I think it would be a major investment. Otherwise, you turn downtown... Otherwise, you turn downtown into a way for people to depart. Make it a place, a destination for people to come.
Okay. Um, I, I would like, just like to take this time to thank the directors for being here and for their presentations. And this isn't meant to, um, this is meant to start the discussion, not to end the discussion. So I really appreciate the time that they took to prepare for us. And as we go into the budget year, I think this is going to be very helpful for us so that we know this information now and we're not being given it, the information during the budget hearings that we'll have next fall. So I really do appreciate you guys being here. Thank you very much.
Mr. Johnson, thank you. You have the floor.
Thank you, sir. Council members, mayor, uh, happy 30th, uh, anniversary. We guys forget about that. Quickly, I want to go through about a 64,000-foot level, uh, visioning exercise with you. What you see, uh, uh, on the, and from your handouts and on the screen are six bulleted items, uh, that give you some thought that the deputy mayor had asked me to take a look at for through, uh, 2030. They are in no priority. They are in no priority. First one I'd like to talk to you about is, is our Global Federal Way relationships with our sister and friendship cities. Again, those are Donghe, South Korea, Hachinoe, Japan, and central China. We celebrated the 25th with Hachinoe. We're celebrating a 20th with, uh, Donghe this year. Uh, but key to this is by 2030, we really should be utilizing these. You, you created these early in the history of, of Federal Way, obviously. And I think there's a lot that we should be doing relative to, um, professional exchange, both with council members and also a professional team of directors and their departments. Uh, working with the Chamber of Commerce, we ought to be looking at both the economic and business elements, um, our cultural and arts, health, environment. I think that it's really important, and of course, transportation and mobility. So I think that that's something that we really need to think about and how to leverage that to, um, meet our, meet our future needs. I spent a lot of time looking at this community. Uh, that's an understatement. But as we get ready to see the future of Federal Way and specifically with the changes that will come from light rail that are still anywhere from 10 to 15 years out, uh, specifically with the changes associated with the financing, transportation financing in the state. When we think of the south end of Federal Way, what, what do you call it? I hear all sorts of things. Well, I'm going down the enchanted area. I'm going to, uh, the crossings. I'm going to the south end. But you know what? I think that there really needs to be a discussion for us over the next, uh, 10 years relative to how we, as a community and the people from outside our area refer to this part of Federal Way. And I would like you to have a discussion with the Chamber of Commerce of actually initiating a, uh, a community contest to name that, that part of our town. I think it's important, and it would be something that would, it would be really fun for this community. I know it's, you can have a very thoughtful discussion and direction on it. I think the other thing that's important that we go forward on this is you just heard your community development director discuss this, but, uh, you got to either sub-area plans or specific plans that we need to look at. And I think that this area of town is going to need a specific plan. And remember, we tried to do one, uh, in Twin Lakes. We never completed it. We never completed that specific plan. So we need to make sure that we get one for the south area town and move forward on it. Here's one that's really important, and this really should reflect on how we connect or communicate with, with, uh, with Federal Way. Both our existing and future residents and a, and a host of different things. You can almost set it up in a metrics. You know, what, how do we communicate with people today? Um, I find it fascinating that while we embraced some new technologies five years ago, so long gone, six years ago, when you recruited me, come here, I asked you, you said, well, Tim, what businesses would you recruit? And I said, I think immediately because they're going through their IPOs at the time, you should recruit Instagram and Pinterest. And you all looked at me like, who in the hell are they? And I said, you know, today, there are some of the biggest platforms for communications in the world. That the point being is that our technology is changing every 18 months. And so how many 18 months does it take to get to 2030? And what's that going to look like? And how do you then subsequently use those platforms? As well as, if you can believe it or not, we're still advertising using highway signs and lawn signs for events to talk to our community. How do you make sure that we're using the most efficient ways that we're going to communicate those with both not from an ethnic perspective, a gender perspective, um, future and current youth programs? I think it's very important. I don't have any answers to this. But this is a discussion that I've had with, um, Becca Martin of the chamber. And I think, again, it would be a very thoughtful opportunity to sit with them and, and their organization and have this conversation because they're doing the same thing. Absolutely, they're having to communicate the same way. Preparation for the future, um, this is just amazing. Um, you, where do I start here? And I'll be very succinct. Let's just go through them. Driverless cars, commercial delivery drones, yet-to-be-identified tech, and disruptive tech. Okay, I, just as a quick story, um, sidebar. In 2004, I was involved with the Defense Advanced Research Project called The Great Race, which was autonomous vehicles going from California into Nevada. 144 miles. The winner would receive a million dollars courtesy of the federal government. Nobody won. There was 144 entrants. Nobody won. The second year, same exact element, and the million dollars was rolled over by the federal government. 18 out of the same 144 drove, uh, across California in the Nevada desert. Stanford won and picked up the $2 million. Today, we are at, with our four phases of driverless cars. Today, the marketplace is at phase two. By the time we get to 2030, we will be somewhere between phase three and phase four. Can you imagine, as you listen to your IT director talk about today, the backbone that is required for the, um, and usage of, uh, running those, uh, streetlights? Can you imagine what poor Andy Wong in the police department are going to be dealing with when, uh, they pull over a driverless car? Uh, if there is some issue that goes on? I mean, it is going to be a very fascinating new world, and it's something we need to deal with. As the next one is, commercial delivery drones. I got this image. I got this dream. Call me weird, but I have this vision in 2030 that Tim Johnson, uh, goes on his computer and goes online and asks Amazon to deliver a product. And while that product is coming from Amazon vis a vis a drone, I also ordered a pizza from Domino's. And unfortunately, I have a collision over the top of the roof of my house between Domino's drone and the Amazon drone, and it damages my house. What kind of codes, what kind of requirements? What do we need to do as a city to prepare for that? I know it sounds stupid and foolish, but guess what? That's where it's coming to, and we better be prepared for it. Uh, there's issues associated with unidentified tech. I have no frickin' clue what the next great venture is going to be, but we better keep, we better have eyes wide open. Disruptive tech, um, very important for you to know this. Dr. Clayton Christensen of Harvard, professor, uh, the person who was the theorist behind disruptive tech, which you all know about today. Who are the bigger ones? Lyft, Uber, Airbnb. Passed away last week at the ripe age of 67. I told you how old I am, so, you know, you got four more years with me, I guess, based upon the kind of lifestyle I'm living. So, uh, you know, got to get out of me what you can. But I think it's really important that we think about this. Downtown, okay. Just finished a major trilogy of reports on our downtown, and I would like to request a workshop, Deputy Mayor, um, with you and the council to go through this. Because I think, uh, what you'll find is, we have discovered, um, activities to fulfill what, uh, Finance Director Errol identified for you in terms of revenue generation. I have two presentations. One, the fact of findings of the report. And two, then policy discussion issue that we need to have a conversation with. There is no right and wrong answers on these, again, and then no timeline for this. Again, just strong, um, thoughtful, uh, discussion about, about that. And I think that's important for us to move forward on. Uh, just one last thing on that. Uh, you heard your community development director talk about, uh, key issues relative to specific plan. We need to address that. And the other thing that we still need to get down to, and I think it's going to change, uh, Federal Way for the better and for dramatically, is the alignment of downtown with the, uh, with, uh, light rail to C-Tac International. If you think about this, if you think about this, Federal Way going north or south on light rail from C-Tac International is the first full-service city that anybody will come across as they get in and out of that, uh, light rail system. And I think that dramatically changes it. Think this through for a minute. If you were on one of those flight crews coming out of C-Tac and you wanted to find a pharmacy that was open 24 hours, you're not going to find it in C-Tac, are you? Where do you go? The next stop is the full-service city of Federal Way. Sustaining the city of Federal Way. I think this is really important for, uh, everything that we do. And you do it in part through the comprehensive plan that Brian Davis talked about. But quite frankly, I think we need to start thinking in greater, uh, in, uh, more significant, uh, elements, uh, from the environmental elements that we talk about. I think that there, these are the four bottom lines that, when you ask your department directors to start making budget presentations, honestly, I've used these before in the cities that I've been in, in San Diego, and San Francisco, and Sacramento, and Portland. And they seem to continue to hold strong in answering to, to your, your customers and your community. We really need to look at our bottom lines as it relates to what we do from an environmental, financial, economic, and quality of life perspective. And I don't think that that's too far of a reach to be able to, um, address those issues. So hopefully, this is the meat on the bone. It's 10:48. I went over by a minute. I apologize.
37 seconds. You, you still are like six minutes short from the original time. Given the fact that Tim gave us a very concise report and got us back on time, I, I want to open it up to council in case they have any questions.
Commissioner Kershman.
Thank you very much, Mayfair. I know I'm only one of seven on the council, but what I would really like is, uh, a report that would indicate what are outreaches to other businesses to attract them to Federal Way? What the parameters are that we're using to attract them? Are we using a slogan? Are we talking about the fact that our property is becoming more valuable in the downtown? Um, because I know that in order to build a tall building, it depends on what the value of the property is. But what I also would like to know, what our plan is to work with the chamber, uh, and the school district, but to work with the chamber to, um, uh, work on attracting new business, not necessarily out of state, but within state. For example, I know in the past, we've had a business summit with the chamber at one of the hotels where we had the developers and people who are interested in developing in Federal Way who would come and talk about, uh, what it is that they need in order to move forward. And also, it would be a way for us to introduce, introduce Federal Way. Hey, look at us. This is how we've changed. This is what we're doing. You know, what, whether we have a new slogan. I know you have a slogan for opportunity. Uh, it all begins here. I can't remember what it is. Federal Way, I know the chamber has their own slogan. I like to have a slogan that says we're open for business. But something to attract, I, um, Britain has something ahead of the curve. But what I would like to do is just to, um, everything we do is, it's not quick. It's going to take time. And I, I just think that we need to start doing building blocks right now. But thank you.
I think you, those materials that, uh, that Tim has. Tim, could you hold those up again? I think the materials that Tim has, I think you'd be, it will be very impressive. We've been spending a great deal of time on. In fact, actually, if you could pass that down, uh, for account, for the council members to review.
You have yours, Deputy Mayor has hers. Uh, these are, um, limited at this particular point, just based upon production at, at. But let me just share something with you. I, I meet with the council members every three months. I look forward, uh, for putting together an orientation packet for you and, and, and get all that.
Thank you. I'd really like something at a council meeting so that the community is aware of what we're doing.
Okay, so, um, if you recall, in 2014 and 2015, we did a huge lift on our, our economic development strategy. And it continues to be and is updated and as well is, is online. And, um, because you've had a pretty tough agenda, I don't always get to talk about economic development, so I pull you aside and, and meet with each one of you individually, and that seems to work.
He started his presentation with saying that we're going to have a, um, a study, a study session on this very issue.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's great to do. I, I think you'll be very impressed with the, with the materials. Councilmember, 75 seconds.
Yeah. Thank you very much. Uh, this is actually exciting to me. Um, I don't think it's a question, but, um, um, Brian had talked about the city center plan, um, the 215 acres, which also the opportunity zone is a part of. And so how, um, just wanted to hear a little bit about that.
Yeah, that's, that's an excellent question. Uh, so the planned area CPO that Brian is talking about is a key component as it related to the ability to optimize, uh, the opportunity zone. Uh, the combination of being able to use a federal program for, um, tax credits for investment and development of all types in concert with, uh, the one-two punch of using the, um, planned area CPO really creates an unequaled incentive-based program, uh, for Federal Way. And so I think that that's a very important component. So right now, we're working over the next five years before that document, um, as well as the opportunity zone sunsets. So we've got a lot of work we've got to do. And let me just share this with you as just a little teaser to this report. We only have 120,000 square feet of available office space to lease in the downtown area. 120,000 square feet. That's it.
That's the equivalent essentially of the, of, of the square footage of the former Target site, essentially.
That's about it, Mayor. That's exactly correct. We have over 3 million square feet of building space, not including residential development, whether it is senior housing or low-income housing in both our central city and central city frame. But we only have 120,000 square feet. And let me share this with you. There is only 5,000 square feet of that that is vacant. That's it, and it will be filled shortly. It's owned by Pat Rhodes, and it's part of the building where our substation, the police substation is located.
So the answer to that is what we're, what we're attempting to do and what we want to incentivize is building.
New building, correct.
New, new capacity. Yeah. Uh, Deputy Mayor?
Uh, so Councilmember Tran asked me to talk about a few things, and I'm going to read the list from what he sent to me. Uh, number one is develop our downtown core to become a true downtown. People have shared with me, Councilmember Tran, that they don't feel Federal Way has a downtown area where people can hang out to shop, walk, and for entertainment. He said, as I suggested almost two years ago, we need to move City Hall to downtown. We can accomplish that by building a one-stop shopping building on the Target site. The big bill, this big building will, could house City Hall, other state, county, and government agencies, nonprofit agencies, and others. The new location would be convenient for residents as it sits right next to the transit hub. It would also help elevate the visibility of our city government. Three was improvement of internal structure, workflows, and customer service of the Community Development Department. Implementing continuous improvement and lean program at all departments to achieve better outcomes. And management theory and practice classes for members of council as well as department heads. That was from Councilmember Tran. Um, what I would like to ask, and is that we, uh, work with our chamber, and I know that you do that already, but they are the voice of the businesses, and the businesses will go to the chamber before they come to the city, generally speaking. So I'd like to, um, even as council, work more with the chamber. And when we're talking about building, there's new technology in the world. My husband, of course, works for the warehouse or company. And now you can only use, uh, when you're building structures, I think you can use wood up to four or five stories. Um, Alberta, Canada, just built a 12-story wood structure. And Oregon is going to allow 10 stories, which would be cheaper construction, generally speaking. And perhaps we could be the first town, uh, city in Washington to do that if it were allowed in the state of Washington. And, um, something to look forward to for the future.
So again, when we get back to, uh, this workshop, you'll see in the public, um, uh, policy discussion, these components raised that, again, there's no timeline, but it gets, it puts meat on the proverbial bone for you all folks to look at the public policy framework. Again, we, staff has no right or wrong answers on that. It's just to get you thinking, and there's no timeline to that. You'll make up that, that determination and direct it accordingly. But we look forward to bringing it to you because it is a tremendous amount of work. And I, I think what's fascinating is, based upon what the council member identified, there is a perception issue out there. In this report, you have, uh, 17 of the hottest retailers, according to the National Retail Federation, in the, in downtown, which you probably don't know about, but it is listed. Uh, and we've identified those for you. You also have 64 national retailers with more on the way. So, um, and may I share this with you? Uh, and I'll get out, out of here to get you, keep on. And I'll get out of here to get you, keep online. With Pier One closing, it is not anything to do with Federal Way. They had a management issue that is associated with it, they've gone through three CEOs in less than a year. That particular site in Federal Way, actually, I think is the second highest performing from a revenue perspective of any one of their stores in the Puget Sound. They'll be closing more than 50% of the stores here in the region. That had nothing to do with us. Great customer support for that business. But unfortunately, what we're going to do is have a business going empty here shortly. They still have an extended lease on that building, two to three years. So if they go out, let's just say in the next 90 days, they're still going to be paying on it. What you need to be aware of is that is the most expensive property to lease, any commercial property to lease, in downtown Federal Way. And the property owners inform me that he intends to increase that rent, whoever decides they want to look into it. So this is going to be fascinating moving forward, because if you recall, five years ago, our average rent in the downtown area was around $16 to $18 a square foot, triple net. It's now between $20 to $24 a square foot. People, the national retailers understand the marketplace in Federal Way, and they're seeing it. And there is a huge demand for being in Federal Way right now, and we'll share that information with you. Thank you very much.
I'd like to make some comments on some common themes that emerged, because they're going to be directional in your visioning process. One, and I'm talking to these director presentations, I'm talking about all six presentations, including Tim's, is I saw better integration, and I work with like 20 different cities. I've never seen better integration or cross-departmental support than I saw today. So that's one theme. Number two, we're dealing with a seriously aging infrastructure. You're not alone there, okay? That's kind of a ubiquitous thing for many cities. Three, so aging infrastructure is not the root problem. That's a symptom. The root problem is funding, and everybody's dealing with a lack of funding. You know, the funding in terms of capital investment, staff, equipment, facilities, and so those are all important things to think about as we envision our preferred future, looking 10 years out. You are very lucky to have a very talented and busy staff. They are very lucky to have a very smart and engaged council. So you've got a really good combination going on. And I'm sharing that based on the context of working, this will be like my 200th government retreat. So I do this a lot, and I really enjoy it, and I just see so many positive things that are going here. So what I'm going to do now is give you a primer, and this may look familiar to some of you, because the same framework that we used before, we're going to use again, different time horizons. So I want to just do a quick primer on a visioning exercise. So the qualities of a well-crafted vision statement are that it is long-range in terms of the time orientation, and we have a time horizon specifically to 2030. And I had shared before, that's not by accident, that's going to be some key milestones. Is that, Susan, was that tied to light link rail and things? Okay, so there's real good method behind that. Another important quality is that it's short and very easy to recall. Visions are traditionally much shorter than a vision statement. I also want to take a second to distinguish between a vision and a goal, because we're going to be getting into goals after lunch. So a vision is not a goal, it's a higher strategic strata. We're defining our preferred future. That's where we want to be. Goals define what we have to accomplish to get there, okay? So I don't want us to, when we're brainstorming this, I don't want us to get into the what or the how. I want to talk about where, in a positive term, this city will be in 10 years. So again, short, easy to recall. Again, I can't say this enough, it communicates the city's desired future. It's our positive preference of where we're going to be in 2030. So to be effective in visioning, you really have to abandon your current reality. Everything we've done today has set the stage for where we are today. So you've got to let go of that to really be innovative and create your preferred future. You really need to think big, out of the box, again, creative. This is the most important thing I want to share with all of you, is you cannot get stuck on or worry about how you're going to get there. Because if you worry about how you're going to get there, you're not visioning. It's okay to be bold and think big. Let's say you just went crazy, and let's say maybe the average is five, what is numeric? Let's say you went way out, and your vision is at a 10. Well, let's say you don't get there, and you land at a eight. You know, you're still 40% better than everybody else at a five, so don't, don't be, don't worry about how you're going to get there. You're really thinking about the legacy you will leave. I mean, this is legacy stuff. I facilitated the SCA retreat yesterday, and during lunch, we had an exercise that, you know, when you leave office, what is the legacy you want to leave? You're defining the legacy you want to leave for the city of Federal Way 10 years out into the future. So I'm going to give you a couple examples that present both good and bad. So all of these vision statements are good, but some of them have some flaws. So this one, "Year after year, Westin and its people will be regarded as the best, most sought-after hotel and resort management group in North America." So they're claiming it, they're the best, everybody wants them, so that's the good side. The only negative I have for that is that it's a bit long for a vision statement. Here's another one. "Our vision is to be the global energy company most admired for its people, partnerships, and performance." Really, really out there. They're saying, hey, again, we're the most, we're the best. My only critique on this, or Rob, is that you say "our vision is," you're wasting three words, right? No vision statement has a statement without above its saying "vision statement," right? And that's going to be on the website, and it's going to be in your marketing materials. Your economic development people, your community development people, will use that as a rally cry, so we don't need to waste that. But to be the most admired and defining people, partnerships, performance, it's a nice alliteration, so that's the strength. Who do you think that global energy company is? Anybody want to guess?
Exxon.
So that's brilliant. No, you're right on, it's actually Chevron. But I mean, they're the same. The point is, you don't see anything about petrol there, right? We're not a gas company, we're an energy company, right? They're thinking way ahead, so you are exactly right. Thank you, Mark. This, this is my favorite. It's short, and it is absolutely audaciously bold. "To be the world's most desired and successful," here's the key word, "premium car brand." Who would be so audacious to say they are the best, most desired, and successful premium car brand?
Honda.
Honda? Now where would you get that? How much stock do you have in Honda?
Two cars.
Ms. Honda? Anyway, so that's great, because people might not associate Honda as premium. So I like that answer.
Is that Honda's?
No. No, no.
It's Tesla.
Susan, you're my boss, you hired me, okay? I'm going to be really nice to you. I'll treat everybody else like crap, but I'm going to be nice to you. So Mercedes, that's the second most common answer that we get.
Tesla.
Tesla is the most common. Five years ago, I never heard Tesla, I always heard Mercedes and Lexus.
How about Genesis?
Genesis, big brand mover, big fast mover.
Geo Metro?
It is Ford. Can you believe that Ford would be that audacious? I use this example because I want you to be that audacious. In a book from, I'm priming you for this, so you can be really successful, Jim Collins, one of my favorite authors, he wrote Good to Great. Before that, he had a bestselling book called Built to Last. In that book, he came up with a whole lexicon of a new way of thinking things. Does anybody remember the BHAG? You know what BHAG stands for?
Big Hairy Audacious Goal.
Big Hairy Audacious Goal, thank you, Mark. So we're going to do a BHAVE, a Big Hairy Audacious Vision. I'm getting you out of your normal, I'm trying to uncondition you, that's the point. So I've done enough of that, let's take a look at the process and how we're going to do this. Because I used to get, you know, 10, 15 years ago, I would get paid ridiculous amounts of money to do a weekend visioning process. And what used to take 16 hours, we can do an hour and 15 minutes, and we're producing better products. That's, if that's not lean or kaizen, I don't know what is. So what you're going to do is you're going to brainstorm headlines 10 years out. This is a very, it's a headlines exercise, it's an easy way to get out of your head and take a 16-hour process into less than 90. So what I want you to do is, I want you to think about what the media will be writing about your amazing accomplishments, in just really short phrases. The reason we call it a headlines exercise is the average headline ranges between four and seven words. Seven words just happens to fit on one bullet, right? We're going to fill up this page, this is a maximum, not a minimum, if you only get halfway there, it doesn't matter. You're going to do some sticky dots to prioritize, but I want you to think big, think about what the media. I mean, let's talk about, you know, the USA Network, let's talk about CNN, let's talk about, you know, the major national networks, talking about Federal Way, because you achieved just this massively wonderful accomplishment. Okay, so that's the first step. I want to show you all the steps so you know how the dots connect. After we fill out a sheet with those very short, very short headlines, we're going to consolidate the list, because in true brainstorming, there is no discussion and judgment. So if Linda says ABC, and 10 minutes later, or actually, it's going to be a five-minute exercise, five minutes later, Mark says ABC, Linda can't say, Mark, Linda already said ABC. That's a ridic, that's judgment. Now that's a ridiculous example, but we, brainstorming is designed to be very fast-paced, and no discussion, no judgment. When we get into consolidating the list, you're going to judge the heck out of it. That's when we start getting into a conversation and combining similar concepts, so you're not spreading your short number of dots over synonyms, right? Or duplicate concepts. Next, you're going to prioritize that consolidated list using your sticky dots. I'll explain the rules for the sticky dots, you'll remember, we did that two years ago, I'll bring that up when we get there. But at that point, when you prioritize, that's when you make the switch from headline to vision. So you're going to be doing your sticky dots, not on what you think makes the best headline, but what you think would be the foundation for the best vision. And this is a very rapid nominal group technique that consolidates a 16-hour process to about less than 90 minutes. We'll do it in 70 minutes. Anyway, after the votes are tallied, you will work on the number-one vote getter, and we will frame a vision statement. This is where we've landed. "As a fast-growing tech hub, comma, Federal Way offers an ideal lifestyle for families and businesses." You think that's a good vision?
Put a fork in it.
Put a fork in it, that means it's done. Allison Fine-Taylor, you have the mic.
Hi, I guess I don't have to introduce myself then. This is my first, my first retreat that I've attended, I haven't been able to attend the one in the past, and I love that it's open to the public. I just wanted to say thank you to all the directors. I think that you guys all put on amazing presentations, and I think that it's easily palpable information that the public will be able to read later and understand. I will say that I did have some concerns about some of the things that were reported, which, sorry, Brian, but I think a 12-year-old permitting process study is outdated, inaccurate. I think that I've heard multiple comments in the community from other business owners, including a storage unit near my house, that can't open because of our permitting process. So I think that we need a little bit more realism about what's actually going on with this permitting process, because I don't, I don't think bringing a 12-year-old study in front of us is a really good reflection of actually where we are.
It was two years old, though. He said 2008, he meant 2018.
Is that accurate, Brian?
Yes.
Okay. I still think we need to do better with permitting. I think that if the community is saying we're struggling with permitting, and I can tell you the story later, but I have a contractor that I met who wants to be sued by the owner because of permitting, I mean, because I think that they're delaying it, and it's not, it's really about permitting. So I think we have a big issue. I think the idea of a downtown core area is really, really, really going to be hard with sound transit coming in in that same area, it's going to be hard to complete, but it will be worth it. Traffic will suck, but it will be worth it. I think there's so many benefits to having a walking downtown core, and I'm excited that hopefully that's going to be our future. I'm also going to say, Tim Johnson is, should actually present everyone's reports, because he's just that exciting. But he's just that exciting when he presents his reports. And the last thing I'll say is just a bit of a concern, when a day, bless his heart, says, "We are living within our means," because I think we are living within our means of our constricted budget, but we are clearly in need of a lot more money. We have every single department that's saying we need more staff, which means we need more revenue, which means we have a lot of work to do. So as hopeful as a day, you know, the sky is not falling, and I believe that, but I believe that that should not be a marker for us doing really well in the city. I think that we need, it sounds like 40 staff in different areas, and we need to figure out how to get the money to make that happen. So thank you for inviting the public again. I do appreciate all the work that you guys do, and a great job to the directors who really exemplified all the good work that gets done in the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Allison. And she just is the poster child for doing it right, two and a half minutes. So the next person we're going to invite up is Dana Holloway. You go ahead and start whenever you want.
Okay, thank you.
I'll give you a one-minute sign.
Good evening, good day. My name is Dana Holloway, and I would like to tell you my top five priorities for the city, and what I think the city needs to focus on. Number one, a sustainable revenue stream, to fully fund the city budget, set aside savings for maintenance of buildings and vehicles, and to fund new facilities and buildings, and pay off city debt. Without sufficient revenue, the city cannot provide even the basic essential services and preventative maintenance required to run the city, which includes our roads, parks, streets, marivians, et cetera. This was the number-one top priority you identified in your 2018 retreat in this building. Number two, a fully funded and fully-staffed city hall. Provide the funding every department needs for staffing and equipment. This includes ensuring the police department has, whoops, the police department has the officers and other resources to do their job to address crime and public safety. Complete a wage and workload study, and implement a plan to have all employees' wages and benefits competitive with surrounding cities. Three, increase and maintain police officers to 1,000 resident ratio of 1.5, 1.53 or higher. And I suggest you have a study session with Scott Chase, who has got data on this. Number four, address the drug addict vagrants who create unsanitary and biohazard conditions, and are responsible for crime to fund their addiction. Five, support actions to address the noise and toxic emissions caused by Sea-Tac Airport that impact our quality of life, property values, and health. But none of these can be done without priority number one, a sustainable revenue stream. Thank you.
Thank you, Dana. Thank you very much. I think my mic, oh, there it is, it's back. Okay, next up, I'm having a hard time reading this, but it's Betty. I'm sorry, Betty, I can't read your last name.
Taylor.
Taylor. Betty, please come forward.
That's my sister.
You look shorter than she does, I don't get it.
She's a good one, but.
Yes. We've got a chair for you. Betty, you're all set.
Go ahead and speak close to the microphone, you start whenever you're comfortable.
Okay, so my name is Betty Taylor, and I really don't want to sound like a broken record, but I think I will. But a lot of people have heard me talk about my apartment complex. Okay, so now, but now what I want to do, talk about, so you know, we have new owners, we're just thriving, and so we have to sign our new lease, I'm in the process of signing my new lease. When I looked at the lease, the lease is 50 pages long, and then when I look at the lease, I see, you know how people talk about no cause evictions? There is every cause, every, they outline every cause, so that you, every cause that you can get evicted for. And causes are on every page, all 50 pages, and it makes you feel like you're a prisoner in your own home. So basically, it's like they want to, it's about accountability, so you could do... So basically, it's like they want to, it's about accountability, so you could do certain things in the lease. It's a cause, so you can get evicted for a cause. 50 pages. I'm on, I ain't even through reading it, I'm on page 16, and I have 50 pages. I've never seen a lease like this in my life. On one of the, I am reading the lease, I could, you know how, they don't even do a background check on criminals? So basically, we could have criminals living on the property that we don't know of. We could have drug addicts living on the property that we don't know of. So there's a lot of things, they put the blame on us, meaning that we are accountable for our own self, not them. We are. We are accountable for A, B, C, D, E, F, G. It is our responsibility to do A, B, C, D, E, F, G. So it's not a friendly lease. It is not even community-based, and we are going to have, we're going to have stuff like this coming to Federal Way? I believe the city council should take action or something. I mean, what are we bringing to the city? This is not Seattle. This is Federal Way, and we need to stand up for the City of Federal Way and take back our city. Okay, that's it.
Thank you, Betty.
Next up is Craig Patrick. You know the drill, sir. Start whenever you are ready.
Hello, thank you for having us here today. Thanks for putting on the public forum. I would like to talk about a few things. In the last four years, Federal Way, City of Federal Way and the voters have approved not to permit cannabis shops in Federal Way, and there's actually article written by University or Washington State, Washington State University saying cannabis shops are regulated to poor neighborhoods. So I think that Federal Way can do better than this, and I would like to see a 10-year moratorium, put on pot shops in Federal Way, revisit this in the next 10 years, maybe 20, 30, in respect of the voters that voted twice in the last four years not to allow it in Federal Way. I think that would be appropriate. We're also working with the groups called Battlefield Addiction. I know Deputy Mayor Honda and Linda Kochmeyer were at this meeting, and they feel that this housing-first structure is not working, that there's problems in it, there's no accountability, there's no wraparound services. We could do more for our vets, we could do more for the people of Federal Way who are struggling, instead of just this blanket, I'm going to do this because it makes me feel good approach to it, and actually have some metrics in place that show some kind of results. We know that the group that we're working with now, with Erica Norton and Art from Battlefield Addiction, are not interested in working with the 30th District Democrat leadership. They don't feel that they are supported, they feel like their causes get hijacked. There's three individuals that, there's three individuals that they don't want to work with, and they're a little opposed to it. This is a community-based organization, and they're not looking forward to working with the leadership of the 30th District Democrats, because they don't feel that they have Federal Way's best interests in mind, in regards to the legalization of the cannabis shops and all the money that was put into there, and how it's been defeated twice. They know that these aren't working solutions, and it's time to start looking at working solutions. Thank you for your time.
I'd like to thank Allison, Craig, Betty, and Dana, or Dana, all for observing the time. We appreciate your comments, and at this point, I would like to invite our deputy counsel, our deputy clerk, sorry, Jennifer, because she is going to read. I'll have you read, and I'll call that person. There's your documents.
Okay, the first is from Roger Flygair. I'm unable to stay for the meeting due to my prior commitments to assist a widow of a veteran and former member of my VFW post where I serve as commander. As a longtime resident of Federal Way since 1969 and a business owner of three businesses...
Jennifer, can you please, can you please, maybe a little closer to the microphone, please? You may be slowed down just a smidge.
I'm very excited, okay.
I know. I'm a fast talker, too.
Okay. Shall I start over?
No, go ahead.
I am unable to stay for the meeting due to prior commitments to assist a widow of a veteran and former member of my VFW post where I serve as commander. As a longtime resident of Federal Way since 1969 and a business owner of three businesses in Federal Way, I am greatly concerned about the planned development of the light rail and its impact on traffic in businesses. What is the plan for 320th as it is the vital link into and out of Federal Way? Also, is there some protection for loss of revenue for impacted businesses which cannot afford to relocate? Information on these two items has seemingly been silent. Thank you for your consideration and comments on these two issues, which are and will be incredibly important to those who live and do business in Federal Way.
Jennifer.
The next is from Catherine Festa. Thank you for your continued work as dedicated elected leaders for the City of Federal Way. As an advocate for persons with intellectual developmental disabilities and vulnerable populations, I'd like to share a current program from North King County. It is the Response Awareness De-escalation and Referral, acronym RADAR, program, which helps build a bridge between law enforcement and mental health services. The program has been up and running for three years and has been very successful. I believe it would be beneficial to have a similar project in South King County. I would like to hear your thoughts and concerns.
Thank you very much, Jennifer. We do have one more public comment. Anne Patrick, will you please come forward?
I'm a resident of Federal Way, and as you know, I've been very passionate about, I speak very passionately about our safety in our community, and we've had some issues in our neighborhood near New Hope Church with the homeless population. And I just want to share some of my personal experience. I've been under attack by certain individuals that think that I'm a cold-hearted person, that's just privileged, and a white privileged person that lives in a house, and I just want to share the reason why I am so passionate about what's going on in our community. As a child, I was a poor, I was raised poor by a single mom, and I was exposed to the same kind of things that we see in our community, and it is flooding our community, and I will not tolerate it, for the safety of children in our community and the elderly in our community. So when you hear me speaking against it, it's not that I don't care, I really want people to get on a better path, but I will not tolerate the kinds of things that are in our community on a regular basis, such as what we see in the library. When I go to the library, I can't bring my kids. If I had young children, it would absolutely not be a place to take my children. This should not be tolerated or allowed. I go in there, and it smells like a bar on St. Patrick's Day. It is completely unacceptable to have people just lounging around drunk, and, you know, I've been told by the library that there's this Freedom of Information Act that allows them to look at pornography, for example. This is completely unacceptable. These types of behaviors that we see in the community, it's unacceptable, and we need to take a stand as a community here in Federal Way against what's going on in King County. So I want to see Federal Way pushing back at what's going on, what we're seeing daily in our streets, and start holding people accountable. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna. Before we move on, I'm going to open up, does anybody, do any council members have a comment or demand?
Do we have any more?
Leah? No?
Leah, come on up, please. And Leah, we'll have you fill out a pink sheet when you're done. Okay.
This is not a full comment, I just want to say, between my toddler and meetings that I use at the library, I'm at the library about four times a week, and I always feel incredibly safe and welcome there.
All right, thank you, Leah. I want to say thank you to our staff, who did such an amazing job, great presentations, thank you. And for those folks that didn't participate, thank you for being here as well. To our public, thank you for being here, great food, great conversations. Thank you, Andrew, for all that you did, and good conversation. I think these are great opportunities, and now I think the key part is follow-through and taking this great work and making it really count. So thank you, everybody.
And I wanted to also thank Jerry Lynn for all the work she's done on this, because she's done a heck of a lot of work. Also Stephanie and Ryan, because things have evolved since we started working on this, which was actually last summer, when we picked a date and a location that was available. And to Andrew for being available this year, we like that.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. I'd also like...
I'll make sure to touch base with Jerry, you know, like five months in advance, so we can coordinate our calendars.
Awesome.
Jerry Lynn.
Yeah. And I'd like to thank the directors for their work that they put into this. I really do appreciate that you're spending your Saturday with us, because I know you have other things to do and your families to be with, so I really appreciate you being here. And to our public for being engaged with us, that's really important. But thank you very much, because I think we got a lot of work done, and I think we have some clear-cut goals moving us forward. So it was a very productive day. So thank you.
All right, thank you. Great job, everybody. We adjourn. Did I get the last word?